While that's loading up, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our May 24th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting, and as customary, we'll start with a moment of silence. And I have one for Sarah Hernandez, who passed peacefully on May 8th, 2022. Sarah Hernandez was born December 11th, 1938, in Villa Juato, Mexico. She moved to the United States with a vision for a better life and opportunity for her family. She worked hard as a migrant worker, but her strength and perseverance provided opportunity and memories for herself and her family. Sarah had a passion for sewing, cross-stitching, and knitting gifts for the people she loved. She had a love and appreciation for music, gardening, and cooking. She loved spending time with her family and teaching her daughters and grandchildren how to make her favorite dishes. Her greatest accomplishment was seeing her children graduate from school, thrive in their careers, and watching them grow and build their own families. Sarah was also very proud to have accomplished becoming a United States citizen. She leaves behind her husband of 57 years, Emilio, her children, Lilia, Ignacio, Elsa, Juana, Victor, and Sarah, her 21 grandchildren and 16 great-grandchildren. The words of wisdom that she leaves to this world and her family are Dios aprieta pero no a horca. I don't know what that means, I just know how to pronounce it, but I know it's a great saying. So with that, we'll give her a moment of silence. CAO Parker, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Not seeing any, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Approval of consent agenda usually is customary. With one motion, most of the items, if they're non-controversial, will bring them to this section of the agenda. If anybody would like to discuss or pull any of these, then by all means, from the board or from the public, we can do so and discuss it at a further date. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to, I believe item 5.7 is being pulled for a later agenda. Okay, I have the approval of that from CAO Parker. And also I'd like to pull 5.8 just for clarification purpose.
So 5.7 and 5.8. Okay. Is there any other?
Just clarification, 5.7 is off completely.
And then 5.8 will be for later time. All right. I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Come forward and...
Good morning, everyone.
Which item would you like to pull from the consent agenda?
I just wanted to...
Public input?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not yet?
No, not yet. Not yet.
Okay.
Real soon.
Okay, so we will bring this back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 5.1 through 5.6 and 5.9 from the consent agenda.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. So we are at 9:05, which is our Lake County Animal Care and Control. And let's see who we have with us. Oh, my goodness. The floor is yours.
Are those the ones with the big eyes?
Good morning. My name is Haley Del Fiantino. I'm an officer of Lake County Animal Care and Control. This morning with me I have Larry, Mo, and Curly. They are our three male juvenile guinea pigs. Currently, we have 16 guinea pigs at Animal Control in addition to the dogs and cats that we currently have. Guinea pigs, they're a little bit less of a commitment than a dog and a cat. They lived typically five to seven years, a little bit more than other rodent-type pets. All of our guinea pigs that we currently have are very social. We recommend that they go in at least pairs of two, if not more. They're very easy to deal with, very easy to handle. Like I said, they're all very social, great for kids, or all that kind of stuff. If anybody has any questions or would like to come adopt guinea pigs, we request that you come out to 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. Or if you have any questions, you can go ahead and give us a call, 707-263-0278.
What's an adoption fee for a guinea pig?
Five dollars. Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah.
Is it by pound?
If it was, these ones would probably go for like a buck, and the big males that we have, probably five.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
And so, that's pretty cool. So next is our 9:06. I think we're at 9:06, too. So public input, I see we have Joan Moss and then another gentleman that would like to speak. Sir, did you fill out one of these request forms as well? For public input?
I did not.
You can get one from the office right here, just to fill it out.
Is there one in the drawer?
Is there one in the drawer?
I used to keep them in the drawer.
Ah, yeah, here we go. No, it's just got a little bit of... Here, we'll use this one. All right. Joan?
I am Joan Moss. I'm an unofficial representative of the public. I attend the Sustainable Big Valley Groundwater Sustainable Meetings. It's a government requirement that the public attend, and I am a public that I've attended regularly. I'm still, and I gave it to Marina Della Gibiani, and then she helped me to attend a Zoom meeting, and when it was time for me to talk, my mute did not work. I attended the whole meeting. It was last Friday, two and a half hours. Marina, I am still representing the public as a member of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Committee, meeting about the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainable Plan. I want to notify you that organic farmer Miley Field, District 4 Planning Commissioner for Lake County, publicly stated at the meeting May 12th that her well went dry due to frost protection activities by vineyards taking place the night before in the Big Valley Basin. She voted against the cannabis major use permit applied for by Cresta Properties located on Gold Dust Drive near Kelsoville. I understand you are having a Zoom meeting Friday, May 20th. I am asking you to include the public who find Zoom meetings difficult to attend. The supervisors have declared an emergency because of the drought, and the recent action by the supervisors make it very important that we develop an archive and that records of what the committee does be easily accessible to the public. That's the back of the book I have, and then summary of engagement, Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and then SGMA, Sustained Sustainable Groundwater Management, as management and use of groundwater in a manner that can be maintained during the planning and implementation horizon without causing undesirable results. I wanted you to hear this, because you'll hear it again, and it'll be on the minutes, and it'll be on what I try to get out to the public. It's very important that we realize that we're all in this together, the wineries, and the cannabis, and the organic farmers, and the members of the public whose well goes dry. And Marina Della Gibiannes has been very helpful to me, and I thank her publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Greg? Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning. My name is Greg Bianchini. I live in 13th Street in Lucerne. And the problem I have is with any positive change needle exchange program in Lucerne, it's going to happen tonight on 13th Street. I'm not against this program. I know it's very vital to this county. It's where and how she operates. The truck is set up in the street, it's not in a parking lot, and she's very uncivil, threatening. And she tells me to F off, and it's her turf. You know, enough is enough. I'm asking you guys to please not allow her to set up on 13th Avenue tonight. Please stop this. Please help us. I think I have a good spot for her, because, and it's, if she could set up her truck at the beginning of town where the Welcome to Lucerne sign is by the lake, it's on Highway 20 and Foothill, it's actually Grove Street, it's right next to the lake, it's really nice right there. There's plenty of room for her to set up and park, and it's the farthest away from our school. It's too dangerous for her to set up on 13th Street. There are homes with young kids living on this street, and there is a school close by. Please no more of this on 13th Street. Enough is enough. Thank you, and please help us. I think this is a really good spot. If she could set up right there, it's right at the beginning of town when you're coming in, and it's right by the lake, there's nice trees, there's plenty of parking, it's the farthest away from the school, and I think it's a better spot. Definitely better than 13th Street, having her out in the street. And I think our customers would like it better there, too. They'd be a lot more private. So, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other folks with public input? Seeing any in the chambers, I'll go online to Zoom. And I'm not seeing any hands up, so I'll close public input 6.2 and move on to our 9:07, which is a present, or 6.3, our 9:07 item, "Presentation of the Current Status and Next Steps of the Lake County Clean Water Program and Stormwater Management in Lake County." And it looks like Angela and Bonnie are here to present this. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Thanks. All right. Thank you so much for having us today. We're going to do a presentation on the Lake County Clean Water Program for you. In the chambers today, I have myself, Angela De Palma Dow. I am a program coordinator through the Water Resource Department, Watershed Protection District. I also have Bonnie Sharp here with me from City of Lakeport. And then we also have other water resources staff on Zoom. I believe Daniela is there. Daniela?
I'm here.
Okay. She is going to be operating our presentation today. And then we also have some City of Clear Lake, or City of Lakeport representatives, Bonnie, and our City of Clear Lake representative, I believe, is Kylie Clark. Kylie, are you here? Or Mark Roberts from City of Clear Lake?
I'm here, and Kylie should be logged in as well.
Okay, thank you. Kylie is the Stormwater Program Coordinator at City of Clear Lake, and Mark Roberts is a planner over there. And I will apologize for the length of this presentation today. We haven't been able to do an annual presentation of this program since, I believe, before 2015, so we have a lot of time to cover. And so this will be a little lengthy program review, and then we'll do annual updates that should be shorter. And I do want to say that I provided the board the copy of this presentation before the meeting, and this presentation will also be posted on our website, the Clean Water Program website, in PDF form. Next slide, please. So this is the general outline of what we're going to be talking about today. We will be providing some background to describe how water quality is directly impacted or influenced by stormwater. And then we'll also talk about some program structure, accomplishments, funding sources, and some of the next steps. We do welcome question and answer at the end, but if any time the board has any questions today, you can go ahead and just let us know. And then there is something extra. We have this acronym cheat sheet. So stormwater programming, like most federal and then state and local programs, has a lot of acronym soup. So we've provided the board with copies of our acronym cheat sheets. We also have some hard copies here in the chamber for anybody present. And if anybody at home is zooming in, if you want to do a screenshot right now, so you have that, and you could reference it, we'll do our best to spell out everything that we talk about, but in case we don't and we slip into some alphabet soup, you have this reference here available to you. Next slide, please. So first, we're going to talk a little bit about the introduction and members of this group.
The Clean Water Program covers not only a lot of area, but a broad scope of items. It was determined that having a management council would be beneficial in accomplishing the many tasks set forth in the program. The management council would not only be familiar with the jurisdictional codes and stormwater permits, but provide oversight and guidance to the work groups and coordinators as they work to accomplish the tasks set forth by the state, but also make decisions and provide recommendations to the Board of Supervisors and city councils as needed. Next slide.
So these are some of the members of our management council. It is a multi-jurisdictional collaborative body, because we share a common water body, as well as several rivers that are tributaries to Clear Lake. So for the County of Lake Board of Supervisors representative, we have Eddie E.J. Crandall, our supervisor. Supervisor Sabatier is our secondary. From the Watershed Protection District representative, we have Marina Della Giannis, with alternate Scott De Leon. For the County of Lake, I'm the Stormwater Coordinator, Angela De Palma Dow, myself, with Daniela Cazares as my alternate. For the Lakeport City Council, we have Maria Turner, she is the current chair of the council, and Michael Green is her alternate. Also, for the City of Lakeport, the Stormwater Coordinator, Bonnie Sharp, right here, and her alternate is Jenny Byers, Director of Planning over there. Clear Lake City Council is Joyce Overton, representative, and she's our vice chair currently, with Russ Kramer as the alternate. And then in the Clear Lake Stormwater Coordinator, we have Kylie Clark, with her alternate is Adeline Brown. And all of our meeting...
Everyone, I will be going over how you get to the management council documents. So if you go onto the Lake County Water Resources page, you could search it in the County of Lake website, Water Resources, and then you go to our top tab, and you select Programs and Projects, and then you can click it, and you scroll down to the Clean Water Program, and then you scroll right to Management Council Documents, and that will bring you to this page right here. You will find agendas, minutes, attachments, PowerPoints, and videos. And also, I would like to note that on our sidebar, we have water complaint forms, and it'll send you to relevant, you can, you can send in a complaint for any illicit discharge or spill or dump site, and it'll give you the correct information for all jurisdictions.
Next, we'll go in a little bit of background, particularly how stormwater influences and impacts water quality.
As you know, when it rains, it's not all absorbed into the ground, it runs off and collects, which is why we have storm drains. However, any trash, vehicle fluids, debris, and sediments are also taken along for the ride into the drain system, which of course ends up in our lake and waterways, and then impairs the quality of water that we enjoy, as well as the animals and fish that make it their home. That is why we have stormwater management, to reach out not only to those who live in our communities, but those who visit and do business in our county and cities. Knowledge is indeed power, the power to keep litter from our streets, parks, and waterways, the power to wash our vehicles in the appropriate places, not our yards and driveways, and knowledge to put in place effective policies and procedures to help ensure that our actions decrease the impact of pollutants in our water sources. One aspect of stormwater management is having best management practices, not only having policies in place, but creating methods and controls and maintaining them to help minimize pollutants from reaching the water source. As you can see from our examples, keeping our drains free of trash and debris, cleaning areas on and around the house, yard, and drive will help storm drain systems. There are many best management practice control methods, not only used in construction projects, but in our everyday life, controls that assist in erosion and sediment filtration as seen here, and also areas that have swales or catch basins such as our parks and parking lots. Yet our most important best management practice is knowledge. It is critical that this information gets out to everyone, especially now. Seeing and hearing the information, whether it's a sign in a public space, posted online or on social media, seen on TV or heard on the radio, or by word of mouth, the more you know, the more you can do to help protect this critical resource.
So some brief background on stormwater management. So at the national level, it's called the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDS. And this trickled down to a permit at the state level. For us here, we are Phase 2, because we have a population that's smaller than the larger urban centers like Sacramento, Los Angeles, San Francisco, those are Phase 1. So we had our first permit between 2003, 2008, and this is called the State Stormwater Municipal Permit, or MS4. And within that permit, we had a requirement to develop a plan. You can see the copy of the plan cover sheet on the right. And also included with this permit was our TMDL, or Total Maximum Daily Load, requirements that started in 2006. And this was directed for Clear Lake water quality and incorporated into MS4 or our permit requirements. And 2008 to 2011 was just a continuation or reissuance of that 2008 permit. And then a new permit started in 2013. It technically expired in 2018, but we're now in the continuation or reissuance of that permit cycle. And within that current permit cycle, there were some amended orders or added orders to that permit, such as the TMDL attachment, which is a continuation or follow-up for TMDL, a trash amendment, which we have created a plan for, and you can see that cover sheet on the right, and then a pesticide pyrethroid monitoring, which I've come before your board before and talked about, and that's monitoring urban outflows for urban pesticide use, like pyrethroids. We are expecting a new permit in 2023 from the state, however, they're still working on it. And the permit system at the national level has been reviewed, and it shows that national stormwater policies do work. So this is rooted in the 1972 Clean Water Act, which is the federal policy that directs state stormwater permits or through that NPDS program. So the Clean Water Program both manages and complies with our state's stormwater permits and the Clean Water Act. And the review of the Clean Water Act demonstrates that it actually is working to clean water. There's some caveats, however. It is very expensive. They have made grants available to implement Clean Water Act programs, which has kind of equaled the cost-benefit ratio in making attainment possible for cleaning water. However, it's still very expensive. And since 1972, there has been reviews done, analysis, and it has demonstrated that there's less pollution and more fishable miles of streams in our country than there was prior to 1972. However, there's still a lot of work to be done. We have about 50% of streams and lakes are still considered polluted, and so there'll probably be some refinements and adjustments to this policy from the federal, state, and local level in the coming years. And the graphs on the right, these are taken from that review paper, and they demonstrate the red line is when the Clean Water Act went into effect, with the years on the bottom axis, and the top panel is streams that are non-swimable across the US, and the second panel is total suspended solids, which is materials that are floating in the water. And so you can see there was a decline since the Clean Water Act was enacted. There was a decline before the enaction of that, because there were some other policies that were in place, but what you want to take away from here is since the Clean Water Act has been implemented, that we've seen improvements and trends in water quality across the country. And so this also demonstrates that local policies can work. So for example, we have invested a lot of time and money, and we are continuing to do that for the Middle Creek Restoration Project. The Middle Creek Restoration Project area is indicated here in the dark shaded area in Upper Lake, and this project, once it's completed, is expected to address 40% of nutrient inputs into Clear Lake. We care about nutrient inputs, because they drive cyanobacteria and algae blooms within the lake, and there's been a strong connection between stormwater inflows and lake water quality, drinking water quality. And so this is just one aspect of a large-scale project that'll address nutrient input. However, you have the whole rest of the watershed and the land that surrounds Clear Lake, that also contributes to nutrient loads in the lake. And this is very established in the literature that stormwater and land management practices can influence water quality. So these urban and unincorporated areas around the rest of the lake can address the remainder of those nutrient inputs, so up to 50%. And again, this is well-established in literature. We have case studies, not just in California, but other counties within California. And this is really important for us, because Clear Lake is our drinking water source, and we have some very high treatment costs. So we want to, water source from Clear Lake is some of the highest, has some of the highest treatment costs in the state. So this is a burden to our consumers in our county. So improving stormwater quality, reducing inputs from stormwater, both in large projects, large-scale projects like Middle Creek, as well as urban areas through the stormwater, Clean Water Program, will be able to lessen some of that burden and improve the county as well as the lake. So the next section, we'll talk a little bit about the structure of the Clean Water Program and some of the accomplishments that we've had over the last few years. And I put a picture here of Lakeside County Park, because actually, park maintenance is a part of our permit requirements, so making sure that pets, you know, are getting picked up after, there's not trash there, even something like a barbecue where you could have ash could go into the water body right there. All of this park maintenance is part of our permit compliance, and so that's why I thought this photo was appropriate.
So in 2004, the Clean Water Program was established. In 2019, this agreement was updated, and this agreement names the cities and the counties as co-committees to comply and work together with the permit to meet all requirements and boost effectiveness. You can find this agreement in more detail at our Water Resources website under Programs and Projects. And you just scroll down to Clean Water Program again, and then Program Documents and Links, and you can select it from this tab right here. It'll be, this is the original one, the 2004, when it went into place, Stormwater Program Agreement, and then the updated one is the 2019 one. The agreement names the county, City of Lakeport, and City of Clear Lake as co-committees. However, the Water Resources Department is named the coordinator of the program, just to get everyone together in quarterly meetings, establish work groups, and meet the requirements of the permit. However, each jurisdiction is responsible in meeting their own requirements for the permit.
Good morning, everybody. So Kylie's having technical difficulties, so I'm going to do my best to present her slides on her behalf, so bear with me. So this slide's the background, it's for the MS4 boundaries, and, let me pull my notes. So the MS4 is, you know, MS4 is the municipal separate stormwater sewer system. On the map there, it represents that the MS4 permit only applies to those shaded areas. And the Clean Water Act and ordinance is written to protect the water quality of the entire county itself, so it includes reporting, tracking, implementation. Majority of the MS4 area does flow into the Clear Lake, and the unique MS4 coverage is compared to the rest of the California on the MS4s, just as co-committees, spatial extent and coverage, the streams, the creeks, and the lake. And the overall goal is to apply stormwater management countywide to protect the flows across the jurisdictions.
The Clean Water Program has been very focused in the past few years to not only address the past, but bring us up to date and think ahead to how much more we can do to help recover our impaired water body. First, we renewed the multi-jurisdictional agreement, so we'd have collaboration and unity in addressing the tasks set forth by the state, and reestablished the management council to have oversight of the program. Then, with cost-share agreement and working with our contractor, EOA Incorporated, we created plans required by the state and monitoring sites.
Some additional accomplishments between the period of 2019 to 2021. This is funding-related, so we were approved, 1.9 million from the Republican Committee, and we were awarded and approved and currently in contract for half of that, so $700,000 for our trash cleanup and illicit discharge development program. And then we will be getting the rest in 2023 under the governor's budget May allocation for next year. And I've already come before your board before and talked about this funding source, but those are the breakdown of how those funds will be used for a lot of program improvement... for a lot of program improvements, assessments, from ordinance updates to protocols, a review of how we implement this program within our departments, and then outreach and education so we can create a legacy for this program are all significant aspects of that funding. And we did come together and write a letter of support for a program coordinator to manage and continue this program. And that is currently in development for getting a contractor to do that work and really excited about that so we can maintain this program. So next, we're going to talk about the workgroup structure and accomplishments. And I put this photo here. This is one of our workgroups in action. So what we had, we got a report of some paint being poured down a storm drain. I believe this was in Upper Lake. So here you see one of our staff out there, and he actually got in that drain, put in some of this absorbent, it's boom filler basically, down there to absorb all the paints that was in that drain before it could fill up with rainwater and flow into our lake.
So this slide represents, like, it's an overall diagram of the structure of the workgroup. So this chart represents the structure of the Clean Water Program. And at the top, you know, of course, there's the council, which meets once every quarter. Then below that, then we have the diagram that is broken into sections, and the sections are dependent on the requirements that they need to meet for the MS4 requirements and achievements. Then, you know, then you have your public participation involvement, where, you know, individuals can address public concerns and bring up other concerns that need to be addressed.
So some of the accomplishments for our workgroups, we're going to go through each workgroup here briefly. This is the Public Education and Outreach Program and the Public Involvement Program. Even though, recognize, the Public Involvement Program, or PIP, is integrated in all aspects of the permit. So all of the workgroups are open to the public, advertised. A lot of them have public participation, citizen membership. And so that is a way that we involve the public at all levels of this permit. So for the POP, PIP, we met about 10 times between the period of 2020 to 2021. We have about four to eight members on regular attendance, and this includes members from the county, city, both cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, and citizens. We've created some brochures, both hard copy brochures and digital brochures that are on our websites. We have some digital PSAs. So there's an example of that to the right, which went out through social media to people's phones. We also had a drain marking program, and you've seen examples of that on drains there. Yeah, we have a view, we have an online story map, this is, that's new. And it kind of walks through what stormwater is, where the drains are in the county, what are watersheds, how people can improve water quality, what kind of behaviors they can do to improve that. And then we also have a video PSA that we developed. We're not going to show that here, but I have been told Sam's going to play it during the breaks today, during the meeting, so you guys will be able to see that. We've also distributed it on our social media. And I believe the audio is a PSA for KPFZ. And there's some guest narrators in there, so see if you can guess those voices.
Okay, so the CONPCON, which is a construction, pre-construction, post-construction workgroup, addresses how construction projects impact our stormwater from the pre-construction part, permitting processes, plan review, and construction, the onsite development, and post-construction, where construction is ended and how stormwater measures are in place and maintained for years to come. The workgroup originally decided to meet quarterly, but due to construction projects increasing and a lot of changes occurring, it was decided that monthly meetings would be more productive. So our first monthly meeting was on Wednesday, May 18th, at 3:00 PM. And it will continue every month from now on, on the third Wednesday of the month, at 2:00 PM. The current members are from each jurisdiction as well as the construction community. Anyone interested in attending or joining this workgroup, please know all are welcome to do so. One component we felt is vital is having current and consistent information in the forms used when taking in and issuing permits for construction and grading. The workgroup has been reviewing and updating the forms and handouts, as well as the policies and procedures, to be more effective and improving our stormwater education with staff and the community, as well as comply with the MS4 Phase 2 permit. The workgroup also created a flyer regarding illicit discharge, you can see to your right, and steps to take in the detecting and elimination of it. We wanted it to be friendly and easily understood while impacting the reader as well. The workgroup also encourages participating in training opportunities and readily shares any upcoming events. If only a few can attend, they do bring back as much information as possible to share with the group. The upcoming year looks to be busy, and the workgroup will be focused on the items listed here prioritizing and monitoring progress. We have no outside funding source established at this time. But even with that, the workgroup will stay focused and determine to do all that is possible to assist in improving our water quality efforts.
So the additional workgroup accomplishments for MUNI is, you know, municipal good housekeeping and pollution prevention. So it essentially meets four times a year virtually, and it consists of five to six members. You know, there's, it involves public works from Clear Lake and Lakeport, stormwater coordinators from the nearby jurisdictions as well, and water resources. So some of the accomplishments that we've been working on is, you know, GIS standards for mapping and reporting. Document trainings for Clear Lake Public Works is in progress at Lakeport and the county. And then current progress and project plans, you know, create updated stormwater policies for staff and construction, create post-construction guidelines for stormwater, review current handouts and brochures and update them as necessary, and then create a construction project inventory, which is currently in the works as well. And then, at this time, there's no established funding source at this time. That was my, your slide, my bad.
The IDDE workgroup is the illicit detection and discharge elimination program. We are kind of like a combination of the MUNI and trash workgroups. So it's made up of stormwater coordinators from both cities and the county. We have about six to seven regularly active members. We meet six times per year since 2020, virtually, and we meet the first Wednesday of every other month. So then our next meeting will be in June. Some accomplishments that we've accomplished are, we've coordinated outreach across jurisdictions for free dump days, community cleanup days to prevent illicit discharges. We've developed an IDDE guidance plan. It's in draft form, so it'll tell us how we can respond to such spills all around the county. And we aren't... So we aren't low on resources, and we know when and how to respond more effectively to decrease the environmental degradation that happens with these spills. We've secured Blue Ribbon Committee funding for the program development for the next three to five years, since we didn't have any secured funding before. And our current progress and project plans and upcoming plans are to update the storm drain inventory. On this panel, you can see all those little yellow dots are all either culverts or outfalls and storm drains. So those are mechanisms on how to get into water bodies and to pollute them. So we need to be updating those in the requirement of the permit so we can see where these illicit discharges are occurring and to stop them and correct them. We are trying to standardize protocols for spill response and finalize and implement the IDDE guidance plan. The trash workgroup is a trash prevention and implementation workgroup. We've noticed a lot more illegal dumping going around, so that is our main focus. Our workgroup is made up of six to seven members as well, from stormwater coordinators from both cities and county, members of the public, and representatives from each public works jurisdiction. Our accomplishments include street sweeping maps for the county. So we have this on our Water Resources story map for stormwater. You can go on and see if your street is street swept by public works, and that is one of the trash prevention mechanisms. We've hosted coastal cleanup days since 2018. We did not have one in 2020 because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We've met the requirements for the 2019 Trash Implementation Plan up to now, which requires trash assessments of selected streets every odd year to provide data for management of high trash generating areas. And we meet every other month on the Tuesday, so our next meeting will be in June as well. Our upcoming projects with the Blue Ribbon Committee funding that we've also secured for this trash workgroup across jurisdictions, we're hoping to build upon our coastal cleanup day, community cleanup events, and have host at least six to 12 annual large-scale cleanups across the county for each jurisdiction. So it won't be just county, it'll be in cities because trash comes from everywhere and all of our waterways are impacted. We're planning to have stream and lake, and lakeshore tire disposal collection because with the drought, we see all of the tires that have been dumped in the lake and in the creek beds. And we are hoping with these funds that we can implement mechanisms to decrease the high-generating trash assessment areas that we have collected data on so far with our trash implementation plan.
So this is the miscellaneous category, some workgroup accomplishments for our Program Effectiveness Assessment Improvement Plan, or PEAP. This was a requirement under our permit that expired in 2015. We were able to complete that in 2021 with assistance from our contractors at EOA. And now we're just in the annual reporting stage of that program, of that component. And then the Total Maximum Daily Load, or TMDL, workgroup. We are in compliance with this. We were out of compliance in 2017. We worked hard to get to this point, we're in compliance. I will give a shout out to Lakeport. They've completed all their requirements for the TMDL. And so they are just in the annual reporting stage for that. And the City of Clear Lake is on the same pathway to get that completed and check that off their list. Some of the final requirements are in review right now for the county TMDL. So we're just having our plan reduction, our reduction plan, under review with the water board, and then we'll have to implement that plan. But some of the things we've accomplished through that compliance structure has been to do a BMP assessment, so Best Management Practice assessment. Where are they? Calculate the BMPs. Not all BMPs are created equal. There's some that are a lot better for this area, reducing phosphorus and other nutrients. So this calculator kind of tells you which ones and what sizings are the best. And then we've done a training to show how to use that calculator. And we had staff from all jurisdictions, some tribes, and departments within all jurisdictions attend that training. And those trainings are all recorded, they're online on our Clean Water Program website, too. And then, like I said, the county is in review right now with our reduction plan with the state. And then we'll be in an annual reporting stage for this program once that's completed. So the next steps, this is our last section, only a few more slides, is funding and next steps for this. And this is a photo, this isn't Clear Lake, it's a little too blue for that. But this is a really good summary of why we need this program, why we need to maintain it. Because once we get trash and pollutants in waterways, they're basically impossible to remove. They're there forever. And so this is a good photo that captures that. So some funding sources, there isn't really a designated or sustainable funding source for these programs. We have established some cost shares between the cities and the counties as projects or permit requirements have come up. So for the county, we use both watershed protection district revenues, and then we have also used cannabis funds and have been successfully able to complete a project that we got with one of the first rounds of internal cannabis funds, so we thank the county for that. The City of Lakeport has funds for this program through general funds. And the City of Clear Lake uses engineering funds for their portion of this program. We do, we rely heavily on grants received and in progress, so we really need those outside funding sources for these programs. So we received a grant for outreach products from the Fish and Wildlife Committee that was to do drain marking, and that was also, our PSAs were also included in that grant, too. And then, like I said, the county internal cannabis fund. So we got 100,000 for one year to do TMDL requirements, the PEAP program, and then initiate our stormwater monitoring, which we had this last year that was very successful. And then, like I said, we have the funding coming down through the Blue Ribbon Committee. The 700,000 is currently in contract, and then next year we'll have the rest of that. And then I really want to thank again the board for supporting the match for this program, for the county, so we can make sure that we can utilize all these funds, maintain that program, and as needed, when the grants run out, we can apply for more grants to make sure we can sustain all the progress that we made. But in general, this program is not really sustainable. We need to identify more consistent and committed funding sources, particularly so we can have more dedicated program staff that'll provide consistency and sustainability. Some of the problems have been with this program, it's gone up and down depending on the staff levels and the consistency with the program and the requirements and being able to have expertise to fulfill those requirements. And so a more sustained funding source and dedicated staff will help with keeping that at bay. Some of the next steps, you won't be surprised to, that they will include continuing with these meetings and the workgroups. The workgroups are really kind of help get those details down, but then the information or projects can be passed up to the Management Council and then to the boards and councils, and that's where we get the progress for this program. We want to improve program support, again, more staff and more funding, and really analyze. So stormwater is an asset, so the amount of money we spend in culverts and drains and BMPs, those are assets, those are physical assets. It costs a lot of money to put them in and maintain them. We want to make sure they're serving their purpose. And so part of more staff and more funding would go to those things. And there's been a lot of research done on that. That's what that graphic is on the right, is the Sacramento State has actually gone through and analyzed how expensive and the assets that are involved with stormwater management. And we did have some budget requests that were reflecting some of those fundings, which we've already talked about at the county level. And I know that the cities are taking their budget items to their councils during budget planning season coming up here. Some of the outstanding items that we want to attain this year, maybe with some cost shares or some outside funding, includes a Low Impact Development, or LID, planning document. So this is a permit requirement that, again, expired in 2015, we're out of compliance on this. This is really essential. So this is how, in the planning stage of building and construction, we can implement low-impact development that'll have positive impacts on water quality, making sure the right BMPs are there. There's also some things included in that that can address drought, water conservation, and other aspects that are important to us. And we can customize this, to be specific, for Lake County. We're talking about phosphorus and nutrient reduction. And we have that started, we just need a little help finishing it. The Storm Water Resources Plan, we need to start and finish. And this will actually tell us and guide us how to use water, stormwater as a resource. So right now, when we get those big storm events, all our stormwater, we try to get it off the land as quick as possible and into the lake. And really, if there's a way that we could harness some of that water, we could either store it for future use, maybe fire mitigation, groundwater recharge. That's the idea of this plan, is to kind of help us, guide us to do that. It is not a permit requirement, but it is a requirement if we ever want bond funding from the state, such as Proposition 1 or future bonds. We couldn't get any Prop 1 funding for stormwater implementation over its existence because we did not have this plan, and this plan did not exist for us. And that was a requirement to get those funds. And then we always want to improve outreach and education because the connection between stormwater and water quality is very strong, it's very established. And we know that Clear Lake can never be clean without the full implementation of this program and implementing all our permit requirements. So we did talk a lot about accomplishments today, but I just want to make sure that we realize we're halfway there. We are currently at 50% of meeting our permit compliance among all jurisdictions. And we really need to rectify that if we want to see that benefit realized downstream. And we do expect a new permit at some point, 2023 is the guess from the state. And that'll probably come with some more obligations. I know they're including some school district requirements in there and some other things that will not only take more staff time, more funding, but also more expertise. And with that, we'll take any questions or answers from the board or for the public. And thank you so much for listening to our review of this today. And again, I apologize for the lengthiness of it, but again, we had to catch up on those years. We couldn't come to the board and present, and hopefully from now on, we'll have a shorter review for you. Thank you.
That was a lot.
Supervisor Sabatia?
I'll just, I'm thankful for the level of information. This was very brief in comparison to the literature and documents that we go over in the Clean Water Act group that we meet with. As an alternate, I just listen in and learn. That way, when I'm taking over in the position, if Supervisor Grantle's not able to come, I can make sure to be up to date with all the information. It's a lot of information, but it's also very important.
Welcome to Lake County, home of...
I got cut off. But it's very important information. And I think that that last portion, the stormwater plan and the idea of trying to store water, not only does it have the potential to store water for great use during droughts and replenish our aquifers, but it also has the ability to allow the nutrients to drop down to the bottom so that we can have much cleaner water coming into the lake. I think that, to me, is one of the most important... I think it, that to me is one of the most important outcomes that I'm looking for for this. But obviously, the making sure that our stormwater drainage system also catches the nasty things that unfortunately we see everywhere. So I think this is a, a really important program. The lake is so important to us, it touches the majority of the county, so I appreciate the work that's been done here. But I have no questions.
Thank you.
You know, being a part of this has helped me tremendously in advocating specific initiatives when it comes to the lake. When I first got on the board, my, my thought process is, how can I, how can I help fix it? And I started looking at different agencies to come and do things like the Oxygenase, not the specific group in Blue Ribbon, but I reached out to another group that does the same thing. And then just going through a lot more education with you on this, realizing that even if you were to do that, the sediment still flows in, and it, none of that's going to solve or heal the problem. So, so this is probably one of the most important things, and I'm glad that the Blue Ribbon is, is Committee is assisting with that, and I'm glad that this, this program is in place. And I like hearing about the tires, I know that there's a lot of different people that have called about wanting to go on the shoreline because now that, now that the drought's in place, there's a lot of tires that are, you know, seen, and it'd be a really good thing to get some of that up. And I have other things, but I think I'll follow up at a later date because they're not something we can really get into right now, so.
Thank you.
And so I'll open it up for...
I don't have any questions, just want to thank you for your presentation, and thank you for always being available for the public. I know last night you were available to my Scotts Valley Community Meeting, they're very concerned about water and, and Scotts Creek, so just again, thank you for always being available to answer questions and give presentations and educate on, educating our public.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. I know I talked today about outreach and public involvement being a requirement, but I personally enjoy it, and as a public servant, I see that's my role, is to communicate what we do and what we manage to the public, so I enjoy doing that, so thank you for commenting on that.
And you're so enthusiastic all the time, I just love it. So in the areas in the county where there isn't this infrastructure, storm drainage infrastructure, like where I live in Cobb, it's a little bit of the Wild West. And so I just don't know if you want to add anything for communities like that, where there are no gutters and drains and... It just kind of goes everywhere.
Yeah, that's a really good point. So our ordinance actually does cover protections under the Clean Water Act, so natural water bodies or even manmade waterways that flow to natural water bodies are protected. And even a ditch on the side of the road, it may not be cement or have a culvert, it may just have like some cutouts, that still is considered the county storm drain system, which is still protected under our Chapter 29 ordinance. So it's, it may not be a cement structure, but there is some structure there. Usually whenever there's a road, there's some structure, so the water can flow away from the road, so it doesn't jeopardize that road, right? Not always, but that's generally the case. But that is, our Ordinance 29 is, protects that, and it is outdated, I recognize that, and that's why we got significant funds with the Blue Ribbon Committee to go through and update that, also to update the policies and procedures for enforcing and implementing that ordinance. So we recognize there are areas in the county that lack that structure of the MS4 or the cement structures, structural control, but we're hoping to address that with some of those funds. But if there's something specific that you have, an example, photos, let us know because we don't know. And so, for example, the citizen complaint form, we are not, I think people think that we drive around and look for spills, and we really don't do that. Same thing with stormwater infrastructure, we don't know if there's a failing infrastructure without that, that knowledge, or if there's something where there needs to be infrastructure put in, if we don't know that, let us know, and that's something that can, you know, we could talk to Public Works about.
Okay, I do have some videos from the big rain years in areas where there's not a ditch, there's, there's really nothing. And it's, it's a lot of the fire impacted areas, so the roads are crushed, there's no infrastructure, there's, you know, there's a lot of other issues, so.
And if there's places where water is collecting, that might be someplace that we could have a high priority project for our Stormwater Resources Plan, where we can actually have some sort of storage there that would either both collect the water, and as Supervisor Sabatia said, to stop, settle, and sink that, so it could either recharge and reduce those nutrients that would flow down, or we could have physical storage that could be used later for fire mitigation or for supplementing during droughts or low water years. Yeah.
Supervisor Sabatia?
And I hope, because I know there's been conversation about reviewing your roads up in Cobb, last time we spoke with Director DeLeon, that that would kind of happen simultaneously because the flooding of the area ruins the roads, and so the repair of the roads should probably, hopefully we can combine those two things together with the Clean Water Act and the road construction to make sure that those roads last.
The federal infrastructure bill does include and recognizes those things are paired, and there are provisions in there for stormwater improvements and water quality improvements that can coincide with building out general or traditional road infrastructure. Yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, thank you for the report. Obviously, I think one of the things that struck me, too, in your presentation is, you know, when, if your, your car's in the parking lot or at your house and you got leaky oil, it ends up in the lake. You know, obviously, and a lot of people just, just forget those things, so maintenance of vehicles, other stuff, but also to talk about the long-term opportunities for electrification of our own fleet and also other electric vehicles as we move forward, because, you know, fossil fuels are always going to be here, but that transition for Lake County, too, I think is a, is a neat opportunity, even if it's just opportunities for charging stations around the lake, our own fleet here at the county, but also, too, I know a lot of it comes from over in your district, you know, when folks are out in the forest and other stuff like that, and I think the technology is coming along for full, you know, for the ATVs and other stuff to be electrified. So now I know that comes with other challenges, there's always a double side on that, there needs to be mining to get the battery components, but it's all stuff and opportunities, I think, for the long-term health of the lake that, you know, we can help do as a county as we're talking about our, you know, our energy policy and electrification of our fleets as we move forward. So excited about that, appreciate all the information, it is very complicated as we move forward. And the one question I had is the stormwater, I gotta, I have to rewind it, the stormwater plan we don't have at this point. Do you have an estimated cost on one of those for county-wise, or just an idea, since we don't have one? What, what something like that is going to look at as we move forward in the budgeting process?
Yeah, so we currently have, thank you for all the great comments and the question, this is a really great question. I'm really excited about this plan, it covers the whole county, too. It's not just around Clear Lake, it's for the whole entire county. And to give you some scale, a comparable plan that Stanislaw County did, and I only mean comparable in that it's a multi-jurisdiction, so it's several cities and counties that work together, it's a larger area, and they have probably about 10 to 15 TMDLs where we only have one. But they got a grant for $500,000 to do their plan, but that included like a year or two of stakeholder engagement meetings, a website, fully integrated, and then a high priority list of projects, again, that would address their 15 TMDL concerns. So ours is not going to be that big, but that's like the top scale, but that's the same kind of, what I'm envisioning that this would be, because it's a really useful document, it's a really useful guidance plan, they're still using it today to implement those projects. We currently have partners at California World Water Association and their engineers at SCS that are developing a proposal for that plan, and we're looking around $100,000 for that, and we are applying for funds through the 319H, which is the non-point source stormwater grants through the state, that's actually passed down from federal funds for that program, and we're applying for that, that'll be due on the 24th of June to fund that, that plan. There are some match requirements, which we've already got agreements from the jurisdictions at City of Clear Lake and Lakeport and County to put in for, make that match, and then hopefully that plan will put in a website development for that, outreach, community, stakeholder engagement meetings, going to things like the Risk Reduction Authority, seeing what their concerns are, how we can implement this plan or incorporate maybe fire mitigation, stormwater storage and that, and then develop that plan that way. So if we don't get the grant, then we have to rethink that, that funding source, but right now, we're going to try to get those funds to do that. I've been communication with the Water Board to see if it's a good fit and if we could use it for that, and they're in total support. And yeah, so that's where we're hoping to do that. I hope that answered your question?
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
And, you know, just to talk about that, as we're moving forward, I think the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, you know, that's the ones, all governments for the county are at that meeting, so I think opportunities coming through to make sure, if it's federal funding or state funding, you know, just like we did in the collaboration efforts for the Middle Creek Restoration, to make sure we get grant letters and support letters for everything as we move forward. If there's anything we can do as a board to help you, do that, please don't hesitate to reach out through whatever committees you guys have, I know that Bruno and EJ are set on that committee, so just making sure we're collaborating on that, because I think it's very important. So we'll just continue growing, absolutely, and I think, you know, all, all entities, and especially with our tribal government opportunities, comes through the federal government side, so I think each and everything like that just strengthens, we're all working in one unity here in Lake County, that's really putting a light on us, I think, so we'll just continue those efforts. So thank you very much. Like I said, know it's complicated, know it's long-term, be working on this much longer than any of us sitting here and yourselves, so taking care of our lake is very important. So thank you for the reports, and appreciate the participation of City of Lakeport and Clear Lake, just everybody working together on this, so that's it.
Thank you very much.
So I'll open it up to public input, it looks like we have a hand up, so if you want to come up and make a comment about this, please come up and then we'll start your three minutes.
I want to know why we have the most expensive program in the state? Is it because of the lake or what? You said our program is the most expensive.
I think she's talking about water.
Water clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said the water treatment rates are some of the most expensive.
Water treatment rates?
Yeah, for sourced water from Clear Lake, yes.
Why, what's in the water?
It's just the treatment, we have a lot of organic materials in the water, there's a lot of green living things in the water, and it takes a lot to filter those out and to get to the final product of safe drinking water. This is in comparison to other drinking water sources like reservoirs, which are only about 50, 60 years old, they don't have a half a million years of buildup and living materials in there. Reservoirs are also drained every year, right? They let all the water out down their dams and then fills up with fresh new water every year. Clear Lake does not do that, so it's just a constant buildup materials, organic materials, living things that have to be treated. And this is also in comparison to groundwater sources, which are not as expensive to treat because it's from the ground, it's already been percolated through the soil, it's, it's pretty filtered already.
Okay, I wanted to know about cyanobacteria and methylmercury, are you working with the EPA and USGS about that?
This program is not, but this program, if fully implemented and maintained, will help reduce the cyanobacteria presence in the lake.
And not the methylmercury?
Sediment, if, any sort of sediments, particles can contain heavy metals, and this program does address the reduction of that material. So yes, however, not every sediment contains mercury, but in general, if you're reducing the sediment from the land going into the lake, you could see improvement.
But you do test for mercury?
Not through this program, actually, we test heavy metals, actually, yes, this year we did start our monitoring program, and I will say we have 11 sites around the lake, but we have two in South County, St. Helena Creek and Pewter Creek, we have two sample sites there, and we have, include metals on, I, I think we did a random metal sampling on a couple events, we didn't have a lot of storm events this year, but we included a suite of metals, that includes lead, arsenic, cadmium, calcium, all those things. So I haven't looked at that yet, a report's due in June, so I will get on that, but we, this is the first year we've actually done a monitoring program around the county.
What about phosphorus?
So Joan, maybe, Joan, maybe you can get that report when she submits it, so you can see all of the different substances you're looking for to have answers for, because apparently they do test.
I can't ask any more questions?
Well, I mean, your three minutes is coming close, so go ahead and ask your...
Okay, I want to know about phosphorus. Can you, can you say where phosphorus comes from? Was it, does it come from the roads, from the household, from the vineyards? Do you know?
We don't know, we measure phosphorus, it's total phosphorus for all our sampling, and it doesn't tell you where it's sourced from. It's probably from any sort of sediments in the county, because the county's soil is high in phosphorus. The USGS is doing a sediment fingerprinting project through the Blue Ribbon Committee, and that's where they're going to identify sources of that phosphorus.
Good.
So isotopes, tags on that, and they'll figure out by taking samples around the county sediment, and then what's in the lake, where actually that phosphorus is sourced from, so we can improve management that way.
So Joan, the Blue Ribbon, no, no more questions, you're past your three minutes, but you can come to the Blue Ribbon Committee meeting tomorrow in Clear Lake, where you can ask some of those questions as well, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more.
No, no, Joan, 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 it means best man, best management practices, sir?
Fletcher Thornton for Middletown. I didn't come to this meeting to talk about this, but since clean water is the talk, I'd like to address something to the ladies. When I was a young man, about 60 years ago, I used to come to the lake and we'd go out on the lake, and you could stand six feet of water, see the rocks, it was really beautiful water. And we had a lot of resorts. Resorts were kind of nice, they had little cabins, and they all started up at the highway and went down toward the lake. And these cabins were used maybe two months, three months a year, and then everybody went home and they sat all winter. That has changed. That has changed. We now have those cabins that have full-time people, sometimes two or three people living in those cabins, and each one of them have a car, and each one of them drip oil and gas, and it runs, guess where, down the hill to the lake. Now, you say, well, that's the way it is, no, that's not the way it is, you stop converting what was temporary housing for the summer into full-time housing, because that extra nine months will kill you. That's, our lake is a natural lake, it has, you know, it's filling up every year, there's nothing you can do about it. The marsh out here used to be part of the lake, it filled up, it all fills up. Where I live, in Middletown, used to be part of the lake, it's filled up. So that process is going to continue, and if we don't stop the pollution and all that drainage into the lake, then we're, we're just going to have to suffer the consequences. Now, the only way you can do it is planning and the construction. Don't allow them to convert what was part-time cabins to full-time residences, or they have to raise it up so the dirt and the water and the gasoline and the oil doesn't drain into the lake. And I can tell you from personal experience, there are houses on the lake that are still dumping into the lake, built right on the lake and they're still dumping into the lake. So until we can solve those problems and get that taken care of, these lakes can work their butts off, but they're not going to make clean water out of Lake County until we stop putting their crap in there, that's just that simple. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you Fletcher. Are there any other folks that want to give public input, looking online, I don't see any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board, and I think we, this is a presentation, so we'll close this item and thank you for this work and getting us up to speed for the many years that we've, haven't had a report, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to entertain a, well, go ahead.
Just real quick, based on that comment, I would suggest if anybody has a personal experience of seeing dumping going on into our lake, that is exactly why we have the complaint link on our website, and we are all impacted by what happens in the lake, so please let us know so we can make sure that we stop that kind of activity so that we can make those changes and so that we can know and be aware of it, or else if we're not aware of it, we, we can't know everything that's happening in private properties and private residences, we only know what we know, so definitely need the public to help us out with that.
Thanks for that, we'll, we'll go ahead and entertain a break for five minutes so that we can get a comfort break.
Yeah. Angela.
All right.
Welcome to Lake County, home of California's largest natural freshwater lake.
Originally referred to as Chabatin, meaning big water in native Pomo.
Is now known as Clear Lake.
Clear Lake receives most of its replenishing water from creeks, streams, and stormwater.
Stormwater is collected in storm drains, which are a part of a system that moves water from streets, gutters, and ditches into Clear Lake.
Storm drains do not flow to treatment plants, meaning that any trash, garbage, sediments, motor oil, or other pollutants flow directly into creeks, streams, and into Clear Lake. motor oil, or other pollutants flow directly into creeks, streams, and into Clear Lake.
Once trash or pollutants enter Clear Lake from storm drains, they are very difficult to remove and most will remain in the lake forever.
Keep store drain systems clean and pollution free and remember.
Only rain down the storm drain. If you have questions about stormwater.
You can call us at.
Water Resources, 707-263-2344.
Or visit us at our website.
There we go. Okay. We're back from our break and we were, we're now going to continue on to our 10 o'clock item, which is our 8.0 items. Oh my goodness, it just went off. And those are, there we go, assessment appeal hearings. And we're now sitting as the Board of Equalization. And the first one is 8.1, approved stipulation on the following assessment appeal applications, number 59-2020, Maroon Allen or Marion Allen. And do I give this to you, Susan, or? Oh, oh, sorry. There he is. Sorry, Dave.
Yes, hello.
All right. The floor is yours, Dave.
Mr. Maroon actually came into our office to discuss some concerns about his property. He stated on his appeal, he didn't know what the value was. We worked with him, pulled comparables, looked at the condition of the property, and we came to the conclusion that he should get a temporary reduction in taxable value based on similar properties. So that is what's before you. He's agreed. The assessor, Rich Ford, has signed off on it and I believe county council has also signed off. And it's for you to either approve it or ask any questions that you'd like.
Are there any questions from the board? Anita, is there any other protocols I need to do, like just public input maybe?
Actually, the assessment appeal hearings are not subject to those Brown Act requirements. So you need not take, you may, but you need not take public comment.
Maybe if the applicant is in Zoom, maybe, that wants to add, I'll offer that opportunity. But I don't see anybody. Let's see. Okay. All right. So with that, I think we'll bring it to the board for action.
Please just.
The stipulation is presented by motion.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. And next we have 8.2, approved withdrawal on the following assessment appeal applications, number 56-2020, Deborah Watson. And B, number 27-2020 through 48, 2020, 49, 2020 through 54, 2020, 71-2020 through 74-2020, Geysers Power Company LLC. With that, I would give the floor back to Dave and you can.
Right, we worked with both Ms. Watson and the Geysers over these two withdrawals. Ms. Watson's issue was actually a planning issue. She wanted to sell off part of her property and thought she could get that approved through assessment appeal. It wasn't a value issue. Her property value was below market value. Once she realized that, she filed for a withdrawal. For the Geysers Power, they have a very large assessment with the county. In order for them to go in, verify all their, from their accountants, all their bills, all the different things, when the bills due, they don't have that timeframe for their accounting department to go through and verify all the information to, to see if they're taxed correctly or not. So they, what they do is they file a protective appeal. So all of these are all their parcels and they filed on them to protect and keep the year open. I did contact their agent on this and she would file the withdrawal. They were done. They cleared it, that everything was verifiable.
All right. Anything to add, Assessor Ford?
No, that's exactly correct. And that's actually very, fairly common to protective appeals on bigger properties. So you'll see it a lot with Safeway across the, across the state of big, big properties like this. So it's fairly common.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
I had a question. It's $100 per property is what I saw in the documentation that's provided. When there's, because this was, in my opinion, and you can correct me, a huge task and undertaking to look into these. Does the $100 actually pay for the staff time to review that or because of the fact that there was no negotiation and that they withdrew, that the $100 did cover everything?
The $100 in the fee for the appeals was established a number of years ago and it was to try and prevent the fact that a number of years ago, there was a lot of appeals where people wouldn't show up. So it's really only serious money. It doesn't really actually cover any cost or even very minimal cost. For our office on any standard appeals, it's probably, I can only speak to our offices, probably about 12 hours at least on every single appeal, some being more if they're more complicated. $100 is not going to cover the cost even for our office alone. So it's really just to try and keep people very serious about if they're going to do an appeal, please show up, please, you know, please show up prepared so that we could have the, the actual appeal.
I appreciate the information. That makes me think of other things that I don't think are appropriate for today, but thank you.
And for the Geysers Assessment Appeal, their valuation on the total value of the assessed of everything added together is slightly, slightly under $500 million. So for them, the fee into keeping those open to verify that is negligible considering their options to keep their rights alive.
Understood.
Are there any other comments? Ms. Grant, do you have anything?
No, I would just note that this is only on for purposes of withdrawal and it's a withdrawal before the hearing date was set. So it's, it's a relatively narrow issue for your board today.
All right, with that, if there's no other questions, then would we need to approve like A and B or is this all one specific?
No, each is a separate appraisal, so each would have to be done separately.
Okay, so, so 56 would have to be on its own, 27, 48?
No, you can do all of those with the, as far as the Geysers Power Company. The, the only issue with regard to just the single property owner is when you do them all together, if there should be some defect in one, you'll have to reopen all of them again. But it's fine to do A as one motion and B as the subsequent.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, approve withdrawal on the following assessment appeal applications, number 56-2020, Deborah Watson.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve number 27-2020 through 48, 2020, 49, 2020 through 54, 2020, 71, 2020 through 74, 2020, Geysers Power Company LLC.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next we have our 8.3, continue the following assessment appeal applications, A, number 03-2020 through 10-2020, Earthways, and B, number 68, 2020, Worldmark to the October 18th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting at 10 a.m. And.
Oh, I'll speak to these. When it comes to Earthways, they were noticed for this date and basically they're, basically putting together an appraisal with the outside appraiser. And so they asked us to basically get an extension. That's what they're requesting on this one.
Okay. Any questions?
Want the second also or you want to deal with one at a time?
Yeah, you can cover both and then we'll just, we'll do both. Yeah.
Perfect. And so Worldmark, they've changed their, their agents. And so they are asked to requesting a extension to also get this combined with other previous appeals they have. So that's, that's the general sense of that one also.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, I was looking at the dates. If we do an extension, could we go past the two-year mark? I know that there's a two-year time period. Does that extension allow us to continue without finalizing what they're requesting?
Yes, yes it does.
That's correct. That's what they're, they're requesting. They're requesting to extend the two-year limitation to a future date. So yeah, that, that allows it, makes our timeframe extended.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if we can extend the state guideline for the two years or if we were just extending it to a future meeting for us. Wasn't aware that we, we had that flexibility at the state level.
That's, that's actually why we're here today. So once we go through this meeting and once we go through this process, then that'll do the extension of it.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Grant?
The request for extension, I'm certain would include an unequivocal waiver by the property owners that they're waiving their timeframe under the two-year statute. So that should be done, not just an extension request. The waiver should also be included by the property owners to ensure they understand that they do have the two-year timeframe afforded to them under the law and they're willing to give it up.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Grant. All right.
Just for clarification on that, so when the motion's made, we need to add in the waiver or?
I think you can just inquire of staff if the waiver is part of their, the documentation that's being executed.
I think we got the waiver actually in here. No, I don't think we have the waiver actually in here. So it'd be without the waiver. Still checking that back up right now.
Then I would, your, your motion may want to include direction to staff that they also effectuate the execution of the waiver in each of these motions that you'll be making.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And it seems to me that since December 3rd, 2020 was when Worldmark submitted that we don't need a waiver if we come back October 18th, but we do need a waiver for the Earthways since theirs is from June 2020.
Excuse me.
Yeah, Dave.
Yeah, the, I'm pulling up on the, the attachments. It does have, I hereby agree in accordance with Reverend Taxation Code, Section 1604C, time for the hearing to be termed for the above referenced application shall be extended indefinitely, provided however that upon written notice, extended to any such extension of the two-year period in which the local board is required to conduct a hearing. So, so that extension beyond the two years is the way, is already signed.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Schwenger.
Thank you.
And with that, I think we're, we're ready to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue the following assessment appeal, number 03, 2020 through 10-2020, Earthways to October 18th, 2022 at the Board of Supervisors meeting at 10 a.m.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I move to continue the following assessment appeal, number 68-2020, Worldmark to the October 18th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting at 10 a.m.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I think that covers all three. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate, we appreciate.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, it looks like we've, we can come back as the Board of Supervisors. And we are at our 10:30. 6.4 Presentation and Consideration Regarding Community Development Block Grant Funding for the Community Development and Economic Development allocations of the California Department of Housing and the Community Development, Community Development Block Program, sometimes known as CDBG. And so with that, I will give this to our county administrator, Susan Parker.
Thank you, Chair. This morning, we have Jeff Lucas from Community Development Services, who's our CDBG consultant. This is an annual requirement if we plan to apply for any funds from HCD and CDBG.
Good morning.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi. Look, it's done with the place. Well, thank you for allowing me to come down here.
Before you get yelled at.
Sam's going to want, yeah.
Been a long time. They don't let me out much anymore. So. Okay, thank you. So every year, the Community Development Block Grant Program lets out what they call a Notice of Funding Availability. And over the years, Lake County's been very successful in acquiring funds. Currently, we have accessed and have active grants for, as you know, the Cobb Mountain Water Improvement System. I think they've closed out the grant for the sewer system in Anderson Springs. Right now, we have active funding through CDBG and we're conducting workshops for low-interest business loan programs where we have 1% loans in the range from $35,000 to $350,000. And there's a workshop today, by the way, at the Middletown Library from 12 to 1:30. We've got notices out. We had a nice workshop at Upper Lake yesterday and we'll have one in Kelseyville. The idea is to get the word out about these loan programs so that our businesses can access these low-interest loan funds and it'll help stabilize them. They're still working through the COVID impacts on their cash flow. Today, I wanted to talk to you, the board, about the Notice of Funding Availability. This year, the funds are being made available through the state in the amount of 1.5 million. We are a little bit limited because of the way the state's utilizing the funds this year. The activities that we can pursue, if we go to the next, thank you, Kim, are typically we can access funds for housing rehab, housing acquisition, public improvements, public facilities, and public services. In the economic development arena, we can access funds for micro enterprise technical assistance, which we have active now, the Business Assistance Program, which I mentioned just a bit ago, and then what they call the over-the-counter application process, which is for larger infrastructure or business loans for businesses that will create or retain jobs. It's all about job retention or job creation in the economic development part of the program. There's also planning and technical assistance for either economic development or community development activities. All program project activities must meet one of the following national objectives. And this, the most important one is principally to benefit low-income households or persons. And most of Lake County falls into that criteria relative, when you take a look at the census tracts, the number of low to moderate income folks, most of Lake County meets that criteria. So many of the projects that we look at meet, meet that. For example, the, the project on Cobb Mountain, the water system after the fire, because there was so much displacement, when we did a survey of income levels there, we found that over 51% of the folks were, met that criteria and that what made the program eligible as an example. We also can use the funds to mitigate slums and blight, do, sorry, spot blight for economic development programs. The county has done that in the past when the redevelopment agency was active. We can also use the funds to meet an urgent need. The state really doesn't like that, so it's very difficult to get past the thresholds that they've set up. They're actually, we see them as barriers to using that part of the fund. So on April 19th, the Notice of Funding Availability was let out in the amount of 1.5 million. There's no allocations this year for community development projects. For example, we can't build infrastructure for a community development facility such as a senior center in, in Middletown, for example. They're not allowing us to do that this year or for multi-family housing or housing infrastructure projects. We can use the funds for micro enterprise activities, which is primarily to help small businesses with, with marketing, understanding cash flow, hiring people, those kinds of things. We can also provide access funds to provide low-interest loans, additional funds. Our, our point of view right now is that we have about 1.5 million available for that right now already, so we're not thinking there's a need for that at this time. On the planning and tech. the planning and technical assistance side of things, we can apply for $250,000 for, and that's for assessments and strategies. And what we'd like to talk about today is the board's consideration of pursuing funds in that amount to do a housing needs assessment and then a strategy, an actual write-up on how we would implement a housing strategy to generate more housing in the county if the needs assessment indicates that that's important and something we should do. In our work, looking at the housing needs in the county, there are there are certain reports out there, but we couldn't find anything that was specific to that would guide the various funding sources in in the county overall towards, you know, what areas should we be pursuing housing, what kind of housing, and how can we fund that that kind of activity? So that's one thing that we wanted to discuss with the board and get input, and I think Susan Parker may have comments on that.
My only comment at this point in time is that we had talked about what our options might be, and I thought this was one of the high priority need that the board has expressed. So I thought it would be a good grant to go after.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So if I understand correctly, there's 1.5 available for us, and we're only asking for 250?
There's 1.5 overall, and they break it down into certain activities that you can apply for. So for example, if you're going to do, if you decide, well, we're going to pursue a planning and technical assistance activity, then the limit on that is 250,000. If we're going to apply for economic development activity, the limit on that is 750,000. So the overall, the overall is 1.5, but within that, there's categories and limitations.
And from what you stated, that we've already, we already have enough in the economic development right now, is that a revolving loan, if people pay those back, the ones that you're offering right now? So we already have the revolving loan situation handled. I just wanted, I just wanted to check again to make sure we're not leaving money on the table that we could be utilizing, because there's definitely a step two after the strategy. And I I definitely want to move forward with saying yes to doing a housing plan strategy, because we have to have one. We can't just decide to throw something on the map around the lake and say, this is where we start. We have to understand what the needs are. And I think the the best information you can get is unfortunately old. The area plans do offer some really good information on the housing stock, but it's it's outdated in so many areas that it's not a good, accurate place to get that information from. So I'm all in favor of the 250. I just want to make sure that there's no other alternatives that we can make sure we bring in that 1.5 for other things that we can utilize.
You know, if the board determines that we should apply, the county should apply for funds for more low-interest loans for businesses, that we can do that, up to 750,000. And right now, we have 1.5 that's available. We're just starting our workshops and getting the word out and that kind of thing. I mean, we just had the first one yesterday. So it's hard to tell exactly where the what the market's gonna tell us what we should do. But if the board said, you know what, we should apply for additional funds for more low-interest loans, that, you know, that's, that's what we would do. That's it's. From what we're seeing day to day, we think there's enough right now available, but it could be we should plan for the future. We, and given that it takes over a year from the point of application to the point that we can actually access the funds, it might be a good idea to apply for more low-interest loan funds for businesses.
And my my last question would be, that's more capacity to fill out the grant, to request for more. There's more reporting that comes along with that. And when do we have to give the money back if we don't use it? What's the timeline that comes along with those kinds of funds?
We have, it's about two and a half years to utilize the funds. The state's been behind on everything, the Housing Community Development Department that we work with on this stuff. And so they've been pretty understanding as far as granting extensions for when you get a little bit behind on spending. And a lot of the times, it's their fault. They don't get us the documents we need to legally pursue the programs and start spending money. And they understand that. And so it's usually about two and a half, three years. But if you have a valid reason for asking for an extension, they'll give it to you.
I'd love to hear from the other colleagues.
Supervisor Piska?
Yeah, it has taken a long time to get those funds together, right from the state. Your eyes are getting big. Yeah. And I I think, I, let's see what the need is for the loans. I know people are hesitant to take loans right now. They have been hesitant through the pandemic. So I think we just kind of wait and see how this goes and focus on this housing plan.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm an advocate of if the funds are there and we think that we could be successful for doing it, that we should, we should look at it. There's no reason. What I, what I would like to say, too, with the workshops, you know, there's one today in Middletown. If we get a breakdown on how many folks actually got there, did this go to, let's say, all the business organizations, MAMA, you know, obviously, I'll just use my air. I know everybody has one. So we got that to all of our advisory councils to make sure it gets out there, because we have math, we have worth, we have all those all over, you know, our chambers of commerce. Really, it's them to get that message out there. And I'd also like, you know, because we have 1.5, eventually, if we could just get a report, you know, on how many people participated in the workshops, people who were successful getting the loans, because it is one thing, we have that money sitting there. We want to make sure we can put it to work if we can. But we all know how challenging it is. Yeah, it says, great, hey, yeah, $500,000 or $350,000 available, but it's daunting to fill out these things. I like the over-the-counter applications. Boy, it'd be great if we're a low-income county, that all the applications could be over-the-counter, because I think that's supposed to be a shorter process for folks to do. I don't know if we can get that, but it wouldn't hurt to make that request on all these loans here in Lake County, especially, you know, with the low-income qualifications that we have. But I'm in favor of looking at that. And then one other question, I have a follow-up. We don't have a good turnout for these four, and maybe you already know the numbers. You said you had a workshop yesterday in Upper Lake. Do you know how many people participated or businesses?
Yeah, we had one participant.
See, that, yeah, that's.
But, but, but if I could just.
Go ahead.
Because the way these workshops usually work, and first, I want to respond to your question. Yes, we did post the information, physically posted throughout the communities as well as posted with with sort of, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and the business associations. But those things, there are so many postings and so many information that it's hard to pull out. What usually happens is we we run a series, and then we run another series. It's not, we just don't do one workshop in a community. We, these things are going to be ongoing. And it's usually word of mouth that generates the applicants coming and talking to us and going through the process. I, our experience over the last 30 years with with these programs here and elsewhere is, it's, it's mostly the individuals that went through the program and it worked for them, who tell the business next door to them on Main Street or a friend, that these guys, you know, they'll, they'll walk you through and it works pretty well. So while we did have a slow start, we kind of expected it. It'll probably be the second and third series where we start to see a better turnout than than at Upper Lake.
So you'll do, so you'll do another series of workshops? You'll be doing another series of workshops?
Yeah. They'll just be ongoing. Every quarter, we'll be doing them.
That's good news, because it says completed applications accepted by appointment on June 15 and June 29. So that was my question, too, since the workshops are happening now, if it would happen before that 15th or the 29th. Just getting the message out there. Glad we're having the presentation today, because a lot of people pay, you know, whether we have Facebook, however they're doing that. So it's great that it's announced out there. And hopefully, we'll have some businesses that reach out to us directly, and we can point them in the direction to, you know, try and get the help they need. We know we have a lot of folks, but Supervisor Piska definitely checks on it, or made a great point to talk about. A lot of folks are tired of the debt, you know, coming on, but those opportunities need to be there. So we'll just continue on. The 1% interest rate definitely makes it attractive.
Yeah.
If you're going to be a small business owner in these times.
And part of the marketing for these programs is today, being here to talk with you folks, because you'll get out into your communities, too. And on that 1%, I'm going to elaborate just a little bit, because this program is probably, while it's really cumbersome and bureaucratic for the operators, it's really good for the individual business. 1% fixed rate, interest rate, and we can extend the term out. As you all know, the term is just as important as the rate, even if it's for some equipment. You know, we'll go beyond the depreciation schedule to 10 years. So when you take a look at what that means to your cash flow, repaying over 10 years is a lot easier than five years. So the other thing is, under certain conditions, the principal balance that remains after a period of time can be forgiven, depending on the job retention and job creation criteria of the loan. So we, we, we know that taking on additional debt right now is hard for some businesses, but we've tried to make the program as flexible as we possibly can, so it's workable. As they're, they're still coming out of the COVID, and now we have additional issues with inflation. So the cost of doing business, as you all know, is increasing.
Well, thank you for that extra information, because that isn't on there either. So hopefully somebody.
Well, that's what we cover in our workshop.
Yeah, somebody listening will get that. So just, you know, that was just a follow-up question on the workshops. We're having them today. It's great that we're here. But beginning conversation was, in support, if there's dollars out there, I think we should bring them into Lake County. If there's a million dollars available, then we take that opportunity to to bring that in to help our businesses. I know we're doing that. I know we had some successful ARP loan programs that went out to businesses and other folks. And as we all know, a lot of our, our local watering establishments, the bars, were really affected and, and, you know, those types of things. So hopefully, we're focusing on those businesses that were closed a little longer during the pandemic. I know we just had a local one opened up in Middletown after almost two and a half, three years. So make sure, you know, we reach out to, you know, those really long-term, we're all affected, but the long-term ones that were closed and even affected a little bit more. So greatly appreciate everything, but in support of going after the 750,000 for the loans, too. That's my thought on it.
Supervisor Piska?
Yeah, I guess I, my only concern is that, you know, we've been trying to get takers on our loan program for three years, four years now, and we still, three? Yeah, we still have a fund balance where we can't. So that's where I'm coming from on this, is that the Cobb Area Council has had a loan program like this. It's been really, really difficult to get anybody to participate. It's been out there. We expanded it past Cobb. So that's my only hesitation, is is putting an extra workload on CDS. But that said, interest rates are rising, we have inflation.
Yes.
This could be a real safety net, I guess, because there aren't any other lending options. So I, I see where you're coming from. And if it's not going to be too much of a burden, we could do it. But I, I, I just have a little bit of reservation from this past experience over the past couple of years.
And I appreciate that. Obviously, you know, we're all dealing with different organizations and stuff as it comes in, and understanding challenges. We've been through the process, you know. So, yeah, I hear you. Thank you for that information, because I didn't know the Cobb Area Council troubles at this point, or the slow movement of the loan program. So I know it's been advertised, and, you know, we're just, all right, thank you very much.
So what extra, I mean, would it cause, what extra workload would, if we gave you this direction today to expand the revolving loan program, is that going to impact you in ways that you're not going to be able to handle, or is, you know, are we, is it going to be worth it? I guess that we're just looking to you for that.
You know, I really appreciate your asking that question. We are happy to apply for the additional funds. If it's really the board's decision, we're happy to do it. We, if there's a need, we don't want to, you know, miss it. As far as our organization, we have the capacity. I mean, this is what we do. That's how we, we're compensated. And so it's what we do. We're happy to do it. We, we've, we have the capacity to do additional loans, and I'd like to do more in Lake County. We've been busy in other communities, in other counties and so on, and we've just now gotten this new fund available and up and operating because the state kind of dragged their feet. If we want to apply for more, we're happy to do it. I'd like to find some larger businesses relative to maybe 10, 15, 20 jobs and really have an impact. That's, that's what this program is all about. And back to your point on getting the word out, we've just started, and I think we're going to have to do more. We're going to have to be more aggressive. And over the years, the success and momentum of the program is based on the word of mouth of those people who have used it, and it worked for them successfully. So we just need to get that going again.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I want to go for the the full amount. I think that it puts us, it gives us a pillow in case that things go really haywire. I know there's conversations, and who knows, it'll happen when it happens, rather than just by conversation of a potential recession. And I think that our businesses still have not bounced back at all from before, and there may be the need. There may also be flexibility that's put into this by the state on the CDBG funds to help out our businesses. But if we didn't collect the funds, then we don't have the flexibility to use it in different ways to help our businesses. So I would prefer that we're prepared to help just in case than letting it go. So I would definitely approve going. And I would say, send us some flyers, some printed flyers, because I'd be happy to walk down every commercial street and just hand out those flyers and let, make sure that everybody's aware of that. Because sometimes it takes that personal touch for people to listen and actually understand that that program's available.
Vice Chair Scott?
Well, thank you for coming today and educating us on this program. I'm definitely in favor of the housing needs assessment, the 250,000 for that. And I agree, personal stories of how this program has worked for people in our community is very valuable. I know this summer, we have extra assistance with our videographer, so maybe we can have people be videoed on how this program's worked for them, how it's been successful since we have the extra help this summer.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. And the only other request I would have to our new CAO would be, you know, a press release. If we could work together and get something out there, do some type of a press release. And I know the dates are now, but just that this program's here, a continuing process, those types of things. I think just doing something from, from the county side, appreciate, we're having the meeting today, we're getting it out. But just one more thing, to push that information out to our consumers out there, our customers, our business partners here helping Lake County be successful. So, you know, if we could do something like that, I think that would be, that would be great.
Supervisor Piska?
So I know a lot of people that have gone through this program have greatly benefited from the technical assistance side of it, too. And so that will also be available?
Yes, we have technical assistance funds right now that that have just come on online with with the loan program. And what we, I'm glad you brought that up. And I, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this stuff, because we do it all the time, and I really love it. So the technical assistance part helps people with getting ready for the loan and then managing their funds a little bit, maybe what they weren't able to do previously. So now they have funding, and now they have a support system that helps them along. So we have that technical assistance now. We could apply for technical assistance funds again for small businesses. However, the 750 number is the total. So then we would have to decide, are we going to apply for maybe half a million in loans and another 250 for technical assistance? Or how do you want to break that part down? And again, it's the board's decision, whatever you folks say.
I think having a part of that be dedicated to technical assistance, since Jeff's team has gone into a business and helped them with their business plan, looked at all their finances, and really got them on track so they're ready for that loan, and they can really be successful. So I think we should, we should do that.
Yeah, I would agree with that technical assistance. And, you know, we as a board kind of committed last week to the one team, one dream. That's that conversation, too, of not only giving funds out to businesses, but to educate them on how to move forward. I also have a request to you, Supervisor. I also have a request to you, Supervisor Sabatier, with PEG. You know, financial literacy? I would think that's financial education. Maybe there's some opportunities to put something together with Sam and get it on PEG and talk about these grant programs, loan programs, technical assistance. So it's running on PEG all the time. Sorry to jump on that.
Sam?
Sam's like, oh man. But, but I just think that, you know, we have this thing, you know, and I know we're talking about a press release, but that could be something that runs all the time. And that would be financial education for our businesses. So I think if we could tie that together, that would be a, just a suggestion, idea. I don't, I don't know what it looks like or anything, but, you know, I think we have expertise. Could, like you said, you like talking about this. We'll give you a 30-minute segment on PEG or something for an education-wise. So just a suggestion, maybe we can move in that direction. It'd be great to have this running all the time.
And it could be as simple as publicity for the program as well as much more in-depth information.
So what, would you recommend 500,000 for the loan program and 250 for technical assistance? Or what, what do you think is that sweet spot?
I think, I think that would be a, a good breakdown because the, in some cases, we spend a lot of time with certain individuals, and the rewards are great. Sometimes you spend a lot of time and the return relative to job creation isn't, isn't so great. But I think there's a need out there, and you can provide workshops as well as one-on-one where you really get in and help folks, not only with, with understanding of cash flow and how to use QuickBooks. And we're doing training on Financially Fit, how to use Workbooks. That's an ongoing deal that we do. So you can do marketing, how to market your business, how to set up a website. Those are the kinds of things that businesses need, and, and then it's free to them. So 250 and five would be fine.
And so, yeah, I, I like that. And I just wanted to add that when, when they get some of, I can get some of these out to not just the town councils, but I'll also go, I go to the business associations on the North Shore as well, Clogba, and I can get these out to them, not, you know, just at least so they know. And I, I seen it, actually. I think they posted it, you posted it on the county website, but I wasn't, now I'm really familiar with what we're talking about. So I, I can, you know, pump it out. So.
Well, well, you know, it's, coming here today, we kind of timed it this way on purpose so that we could come and talk with you folks because you have high visibility, and then that'll get the word out on that level. And I do want to make sure I communicate to you that the, these are ongoing workshops and outreach. It's not just, we're going to do a few, and we're going to be doing them every quarter and rotating them. There'll be at least three or four every, every quarter, every few months.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah. So right now, my math is telling me we're up to a million dollars with 250 on the planning and 750 total between the technical assistance and the loans. What are our opportunities for the other five? I just want to have that conversation before we just walk away with only getting two-thirds.
Please go back to...
Can you power it?
Uh huh.
Because I'm, I'm looking at your PowerPoint, and it says 250 for micro enterprise activities, technical assistance to small businesses with five employees or less, and 500,000 for direct assistance to business low-interest loans to retain jobs. But that's the only amounts that I see, other than the 250 for the planning and technical assistance as well. And so that itself doesn't add up to 1.5. Is there something that's still available that could be of benefit?
So, so if we take the two, 250, 250, and the five, right, we have a half a million we could still apply for. The only other activity that we're eligible for this, this year because of the way the states restricted us, it would be for a, a program that would benefit low-to-mod income households and, or veterans or seniors. And if there's a specific project in mind there, we would have a very short turnaround time to put, put that information together. But again, if there's a specific project in mind or our program, it can't be a project. We can't build anything, but we can use these funds to provide programs to low-mod households, veterans, and seniors.
And is that for like, housing revitalization, to help fix up things? What, what, what would it be used for if you can't build?
Well, you couldn't do housing revitalization. So you would, it would have to be an actual program, a, a, let's see, services that are provided. You could supplement services that are being provided to seniors. And typically, what we've used these funds for in the past is building stuff. So because of the tight timeline that we have this year to make the application, the application is due 20th?
20th, yeah.
It sounds like it's a little tight to be able to create something. I, I just wanted to at least ask about the 500,000 before just...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was going to say, and we still have to come back with a final resolutions for you to prove before we can even submit to the state.
Okay. And I, I have one final question. I know that we contract with CDS for the CDBG, but I also know that we're part of Lake EDC. How does this complement one another? How does this overlap each other? I'm, I'm not in full understanding of that. So if there's, can be some information to make sure that we're, we're not duplicating and that we're benefiting from all of the above.
Yeah, we, we are also on contract to implement a loan program for the Economic Development Corporation. So we are, Andy Lucas especially, was talking to the executive director of the EDC, I mean, you know, at least once a day, three, four times a week. And so I think right now the EDC is pursuing a state program that provides up to 2,500 to small businesses in a grant to help them also. So if that's approved, for example, we will work with the EDC to market their program, and then they cross-market our stuff. Because we're, while we may be situated, you know, situated in different buildings, we work together closely all the time. And we, we try to communicate with each other on a daily basis regarding this person, we're, we're helping this business with this and this. Can you pick up this responsibility here and take us with your SPD, your Small Business Development Center money? So that, what we're trying to do is get as much flexibility and resources available to our businesses, day in and day out. We do that all the time. So one thing that we don't like to do is, is overlap or, you know, get in the way of the other service provider. We work together pretty closely. We also, of course, work with the chambers and the business associations.
Okay. Appreciate that.
All right. So with that, any other questions or comments? Open up the public input. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this item for 6.4? I see somebody in Zoom, phone 6205. If you can unmute, you will start your three minutes, and please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Good morning. This is Bart Levinson, and I'm having a terrible migraine. So if I garble my words, excuse me. I wandered into a presentation by Jeff Lucas right after the valley fire, and it was almost identical to what I'm hearing today. And I really appreciate the supervisors asking questions about how can the public be notified and be more involved? I'm a valley fire survivor, and I've been told by the Lake County Planning Department that we, fire survivors, we rebuilders after fire, have had to understand that we are a low priority behind the incoming cannabis industry in Lake County. I am also a disabled elder. And what I would like to open up, ask a question about is, I've heard Jeff Lucas say in the past that some of this funding could possibly go for staffing. Could it help increase and bring up to par what's needed, staffing and community development, planners permitting, code enforcement, and a, someone to help those trying to rebuild? And come from a point of view of, like you are with the marijuana industry, of realizing that as a whole group of all the people who've been affected by fire, we are a large group of money wanting, ready, able to spend in Lake County. We need support.
Thank you for that. I don't know if you, I don't know if that fits what we're talking about.
It's different.
Yeah. But no, thank you for that, and that there's not anything else. So see if there's anyone else on public input that would have any questions. And if not, I'll bring it back. Closed public input. Actually, there is. Please come up and state your name for the record. Once you get up and state your name, we'll start for your three minutes.
Joan Moss. I was a valley fire survivor also, and I was in line for a FEMA loan. It was just great. And then what I found out is that if you take a FEMA loan, you'd have to pay it back. I would be trying to pay it back. I'd be dead before I could pay it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. This isn't about FEMA loans, it's small business loans. But thank you for that information, Joan. With that, we'll close in, public input and bring it back to the board. I think if there's any further direct, are we going to take action on this? I know that we talked about that, so.
I believe we have a resolution coming up that this is just direction.
We do have a resolution, but I would like direction from the board regarding the preparation of these applications.
Are you talking about the amounts and what, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're exactly right. That was a-
Are you talking about the amounts and what programs? Or, okay, I have that for you. 250 for the housing assessment and strategy, 250 for technical assistance, and 500,000 in loans.
Yep. Absolutely, yes.
And, but we don't have a resolution in front of us today?
No, we, we have to get direction to bring it back. We don't have just consensus that those are the programs you want funded.
Direction.
And we'll come back with a resolution by the 14th.
We're all good with that for consensus.
And then the idea is, once we have the housing strategy, then we can go ahead and look at those other loans potentially as well.
Yes.
All right.
That's, that's what's exciting, is to be prepared for that.
So we have a consensus. Do you know what to do from here? And we'll be seeing you in the near future. I'll be looking out for your flyers, so I can post those and get the information out to you. I know in my area, and I know the rest of the supervisors will do the same thing. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
With that, it looks like-
So good to see you.
Looks like we are on our 6.5, but I'm going to entertain a break before that. I know that we're about 10 minutes behind, but I'm just going to give us five minutes before that, so that also, I think it's community development can come up and set up and get ready. So we'll take a break and move on to our 6.5 after the break. All right. So we're back from our break. It's 11:20. Our item is the 6.5, our 11 a.m. consideration of an ordinance adding Article 73 to Chapter 21 of the Lake zoning ordinance to address commercial cannabis permitting activities and enforcement. And with that, I will give the floor to Director Darby, and she can go from there. Hello, Director Darby.
Thank you so much. Is this on? It is? Okay. All right. So my name is Director Darby with the Community Development Department. And sorry, I'm just used to saying that. And so today I am here before you to introduce an article that we're proposing to add to Chapter 21 of the Lake County zoning ordinance on the commercial cannabis ordinance. And I would like to start off, before we actually go into our presentation, I'd like to do a couple of things. One is, I would like to introduce my staff, because this is definitely a joint effort. So I want to give them the opportunity to introduce themselves, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I will start off with Andrew.
Hi, I'm Andrew Amalong. I am the Cannabis Program Manager.
My name, my name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager for the Code Enforcement Division.
Good morning. My name is Bill Collins, Chief Building Official.
And I'm Jamie Henry. I'm the cannabis technician for CDD.
And we have a couple of other staff members that are not here today because of family emergencies. So we're missing Michael McGinnis, and we're also missing Mary Claybon. So we will have some fill-ins for them. So thank you. So I would like to start off by saying that this has been a huge task, and we have been through the existing ordinance as well as the proposed revised ordinance. And the way that we came up with our revisions of what you see, what we're proposing currently, is based on recommendations or inputs that we've been receiving overall from all stakeholders, or issues that we've had to address in the department overall. So as we went through the ordinance, we tried to highlight issues that we received, whether or not it dealt with water usage, if it dealt with fire, if it dealt with drought management, scene and combining. So whatever those issues were, we tried to address it and to conduct the appropriate research and then analyze it, and then make the best use effort that we could with what we had working for our staff. But as I went through this, I realized how overwhelming it is for me only being here for seven months, and that maybe adequately, we have not addressed all issues that we need to ask, have addressed. Therefore, I am going to start off by requesting that the Board of Supervisors request another, or approve another pathway for us to review the ordinance, whether that be, that be a task force or some other pathway in which we all can work collectively to review the ordinance. But our presentation today is going to highlight a lot of the issues that we have been receiving through our department. And as we move forward, it's also going to have recommendations that we have. But knowing that this is a draft, number one, of the ordinance, and there are, I would predict other drafts, ordinances that will be coming forward. Okay? Having said that, I will move Okay, so our presentation outline is what issues are we addressing, what have we done, and what are we proposing to do, what actions are we taking, and where we're going, and then our next steps. In order to categorize all the issues that we had, so we went through and we put all of our issues in the ordinance. And they were just based on sections, and we put the topics in there. But we didn't really have it organized in a way that we can present it to you where you could really understand what we did and where we're going. So we divided the ordinance up, or the presentation up into three categories. So we looked at land use and zoning, the environment, and also the community as a whole. So again, just to reiterate, what we did to derive at our draft recommendations is that we reviewed and analyzed commercial cannabis ordinances from other jurisdictions. We reviewed regulations from the Department of Cannabis Control, the Water Board, the Fish and Wildlife, et cetera. We outlined and discussed many topics of concern with internal stakeholders, because at that time, we were not allowed to provide an outside external draft of the ordinance because we did not have the direction from the board. We conducted a comparative analysis between the existing ordinance as well as the proposed ordinance, and we had, we held meetings with the CDD Committee at that time, before it was dissolved, also a county council and administration. So why are we proposing to add a new article to Chapter 21 of the County zoning ordinance? Basically, it was disorganized. And we were proposing to make it more user-friendly, easier to read, and more comprehensive. And, and to do that, that's how we came up with our categories. So we looked at land use and zoning, the environment, as well as the community as a whole. So in terms of land use and zoning, some of the things that we've done to the ordinance is that we've updated, oops, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to switch this over.
Okay. So in the previous ordinance, or the current upholding one, in Article 27, there were definitions that may not have provided more, the most clarity. And so not only did we add definitions of words that maybe weren't in it before to this current draft, but also we provided clarity, clarity in those definitions to help not only CDD explain those to the public, our applicants, our permittees, but it also was better understanding for us. As far as, further than that, our permit application requirements, we have adjusted those and made checklists that actually provide- that actually provide better clarity, again, to explain exactly what an applicant needs when they're applying for that. So when they get the application, the application itself doesn't state every single item that they need. So now we have developed checklists that actually explain exactly what items that they will need to include with that application when they put it, when they deliver it to us. In addition to that, we have updated the master fee schedule and actually increased, um, the fees of our application to better adjust to the hours that are put into these cannabis projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And the next thing we did, we looked at zoning districts and allowable uses and the use permit parcel requirement. So in the ordinance, you will see that we've actually either deleted or added zoning districts that we thought would be the best use for that particular parcel. So we got a lot of calls about setbacks and buffers from residential districts. So we've actually removed some districts like C-one, which is some of the areas of the code for commercial cannabis, and we've actually deleted, um, other and added some. So you'll see that as you go along as well. Setback requirements, we've actually increased some of our setback requirements, and this was only based on the calls that we were receiving in the, um, from NCDD. But we also looked at our zoning ordinance and the definitions of what actually defines, defines a zoning classification. So what does C-one mean or C-two mean? And we looked at those, and we also looked at the development standards for those particular zoning districts, and we made recommendations. We also, in addition to that, not only did we look at our code, but we looked at what other jurisdictions we're doing. Although I understand we are very unique here in what we do and what we need to propose, but also we wanted to get an idea of what other counties and municipalities we're doing. We added a section to the ordinance that dealt with incomplete and abandoned applications. And the reason for doing that is because we have, as you probably know, approximately a hundred and thirty-five pending applications that are in CDD now waiting to be moved forward or processed. Some of the applicants, we are unable to contact. They are not responsive. And so we have like this log that's just sitting there, and we're unable to move forward. So we would like to add in our ordinance something that says that when an application is incomplete or abandoned, we would like to put a timeframe in which we can move forward. And I believe that that timeframe was ninety days for incomplete or abandoned applications. Modifications, amendments, and change of name and ownership has also been major issue since I've been here. So I will start off with change of name and ownership. So I understand that previously there was a process in which you can change your name if you, you owned a cannabis cultivation form, that you can change your name with an application that we had. I didn't know that when I got here, so I gave people a little pushback. But now that I have discovered that there is a form that we can do that, you can actually change your name if you own the property and someone else wants to purchase that property. They are allowed to be able to do that, provided that they do meet all other criteria in terms of live scans and the other processes that they would have to follow. That would, that would be the same thing in regards to ownership as well, if you wanted to sell your property. Modifications and amendments, and I will be very honest with you, I've gone over this, over this, over this, over this. With modifications and amendments, and I've been told that Section sixty-point-three-three is how we handle actual modifying or amending a project. So from my experience of being here, we have use permit applications, and the applicant comes in and they want to change the scope. And in order to change the scope of a project, they would have to, based on Section sixty-point-thirty-three, they would have to apply for a new use permit project because they have changed the scope of their project, and they would have to go through the exact same process in which they had their original project approved. I get a lot of pushback from applicants in this particular case. County Council have been excellent with explaining to me how this process works and what's required and how it actually should move forward. But in my brain, I can't seem to understand that if you're, if you've been approved for a use permit and then you're coming back to amend it, how that would impact the team. So I think in that kind of regards, that's where our task force would come in or other pathway that maybe the board could recommend, that we can kind of look at that and analyze it a little bit more. But that is the existing regulations and county council have interpreted, interpreted it correctly for me. I'm just trying to process it in my own mind. And that was also, will deal with amendments. The temporary use permits for cannabis events is a new item that's been really requested by the community. And we have added a process in which you can obtain a temporary use permit for cannabis events. The other issue that we've, um, we've been facing is insurance and bond requirements. Not the actual requirements, but the issue we've been facing is actually illegal dumping or someone who has a property, they decide they no longer want to grow, and they just leave their property the way it is, and then code enforcement has to go out and actually clean it up. And it costs the city or county a lot of money. So we thought that if we added some type of requirements as insurance in terms of a bond of some type, then if the cannabis industry would leave or the illegal growers would leave, not illegal, leave their property, then at least we would have bond money upfront to be able to go and clean up that particular site. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Emelong, and he's going to go over some of the environmental issues we have been addressing.
Yes, as you can see, we have a handful of environmental issues that we're facing. And at the top of the list would be hydrology and drought management. This has been a very, uh, I guess, a very important issue to face as we've been experiencing extreme drought. And as we know, in Ordinance thirty-one oh-six, we do require hydrology reports and drought management plans for all use permit, or for all use permits and their applications. But, um, we, what we've been experiencing is that the reports and the plans that we are receiving just are simply not robust enough. We do require that they provide their water use, water availability, and cumulative impacts within the hydrology reports. However, especially in that last one, when it comes to cumulative impacts, or impacts, there, you know, it lacks a clear path to find those. And, and we could benefit from some improved guidance on that end. The same goes for the drought management plans. While we require them, we don't have any clear guidelines as to what they should include. So within the draft ordinance, and again, we're just really scratching the surface here. We, we hope to get a lot more comments and feedback to kind of build upon what we have, but we do have an outline to improve that process. Moving on, another issue has been aesthetics and the scenic combining district. This has been hard to address mainly because scenic combining districts are applied differently in different community area plans. So years ago, I believe nearly two decades ago, when the existing scenic combining issues were addressed, they were created on the community area level, and those locations are not easily accessed by the public. There are some public channels online that they can find those districts, but it doesn't, you know, it's not clearly available. So some more guidance, guidance on how to approach the scenic combining districts can help, as well as some practical applications. We do have some internal procedures that will request visibility surveys when it applies to a particular project. However, we could, uh, we could improve these procedures and potentially codify them. Moving on, tribal cultural resources has also been an issue. We're going to get into that a little more in the next slide when it comes to the community. But we definitely have some room for improvement with communication with our local tribes. And in terms of soil grading and erosion control, this has also been a problem with a handful of projects. A lot of it has been related to early activation and our applicants not necessarily fully understanding what scope they can, uh, basically embark on when it comes to their early activation projects. And with that in mind, we do not have early activation in the proposed ordinance. Another aspect has been hazardous materials and how they're stored. And this, a lot of this comes from the general public. And, you know, many people concerned about cannabis projects coming up in their area and what kind of pesticides and fertilizers are being used. And, uh, we would like to provide the public with more information and provide our applicants, you know, just a clear understanding, just to make sure they know what they can and can't do. A lot of that is addressed at the state level. Public lands and recreation has been an issue as well, as far as what proximity a project can be to public lands. Another issue that we're hearing about more is the fact that we do have a national monument here in the county. And how does cannabis, what's the relationship of cannabis with that national monument? So we're hoping to, you know, receive more comments and feedback from the public, from the cannabis industry on public lands. Cumulative impacts, again, we're, this is, you know, we're, we're at this point where this new industry is becoming established. So for the first time, we're really able to start collecting data and start having an idea of what the cumulative impacts are for our nearly, well, we have a hundred and ten cannabis use permits approved. So, I mean, this is the first step in looking at what the overall impact will be of the cannabis cultivation and cannabis industry as a whole. Now, removal of trees is something that we, it's included, there's an outline on it, but this has been a highly contentious issue. And the direction that we're feeling is that we could potentially need an ordinance of its own to address tree removal. And finally, we get into secret requirements and environmental impact reports. So far, of all of our a hundred and ten approved projects, uh, we haven't had any that have undergone an environmental, environmental impact report. And basically, we do the initial studies, we go through a handful of checklist, and for each section, like aesthetics, you know, soils and erosion and geology, hazardous materials, for each of those, we, we try to come to one of a few conclusions. Either there's no impact to the environment, there's a less than significant impact to the environment, or there's a less than significant impact to the environment with mitigation measures in place. If they can meet any of those requirements, then they pretty much clear that section. If any one of those sections cannot clear those requirements, even with mitigation measures, we cannot guarantee that there is, uh, less than significant impact to the environment, then that should trigger an environmental impact report. We would like to see in the new ordinance clearer guidelines on how we approach that. Few options have been establishing thresholds, but there is an issue with establishing new thresholds within the new ordinance because they're hard to be backed, they cannot be backed up without a county-wide programmatic EIR. So until that is in place, it's hard to have clear guidelines where a project hits this size and it uses up this much water, it would require the environmental impact report. So there's a few options on how we can approach this, and we hope to get more feedback and develop that in the final version of the ordinance. And Mary, do you want to take the community? Oh, right. Uh, let me go back, especially. Okay, yes. The hydrology report, um, that's another thing. As we are receiving hydrology reports, and the same goes for biological assessments and archaeological assessments, we do not currently have a hydrologist as part of county staff. Or I think more specifically for the needs of cannabis, since it's mostly groundwater, we could benefit from having a county-designated hydrogeologist. And without that staff level of review, we're receiving these reports that are created by hydrologists, civil engineers, and hydrogeologists, but they are hired and paid for by the applicants. So obviously, there's a conflict of interest that could exist with the current method. So hopefully, we can get that addressed in the new ordinance as well. And anything else? Okay. So, uh, finally, we get to the community. The first item on this list would be tribal notification and consultation. According to AB fifty-two, Assembly Bill fifty-two, we are required to send out notification to all of the local tribes. However, our communication paths could, there's definitely room for improvement. We're, and with another factor in that is just with the high turnover of staff. It's the avenues to receive requests for consultation could have potentially gotten lost in a former planner's inbox or, you know, some other method of communication. So we really hope to improve the communication with our tribes. Exclusion zones and prohibited locations need to be, I guess, expanded upon and more clearly defined. We already have some existing exclusion zones, as you know. Some of the exclusion zones that are listed on the online portal are not actually applicable with the current ordinance. They predate that to Article seventy-two. And there's been a lot of recommendations for new exclusion zones, such as within, uh, you know, HOAs and POAs. So there's some new ideas. We would like to hear from the public more, you know, where they want cannabis activities and where they do not want that, and to have those clearly defined. And then we get on to, well, Mary, go ahead. This kind of is where we transition into code, so.
Okay, and so then we go on to, um, issues that we have regarding odor. And in our current ordinance, it states that an applicant shall prepare an odor response program that includes, but not limited to, designating an individual who is responsible for responding to odor complaints within twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week, including holidays. It also states that providing property owners and residents a property within a one-thousand-foot radius of the cannabis facility with the contact information of the individual responsible for responding to odor complaints, and that policies and procedures describing the actions to be taken when an odor complaint is received, including the training provided to the responsible party, party on how to respond to an odor complaint. So there are policies currently that are in the ordinance, however, we are not enforcing those. And so that's something that we definitely would need to carry over to the new ordinance, the proposed new adding Article seventy-three. But it would have to also require enforcement. We also have issues regarding noise that we get a lot of calls about. But the noise is mostly dealing with generators and what those decibels are, are for the noise. So we have in CDD purchased new noise equipment. So we're able to go out with code enforcement and actually test the noise. The problem with this is that sometimes the noise is in the evening when we're not here, um, or on the weekend when we're not here. So those are things that we would need to address on how to properly, um, attack that. But I do know from, I hate to be telling code enforcement's business, but I do know that code enforcement is going to start doing a round, uh, rotation of days where they are going to be more on work on Saturdays or on the weekends and after work. So we'll be able to implement a system that can improve. And I'm going to turn it over to Marcus.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, I don't think that's the first. All right. Yes. All right. So the enforcement section, it's really fortunate because the board has already provided us with the mechanisms and tools to enforce these codes, um, for cannabis. Uh, Section thirteen forty-nine and thirteen, which deals with permitted cannabis operations, and thirteen fifty addresses the unpermitted. So, um, really, there's not much to be added here that's new. You're familiar with the ordinances, you approved and enacted the ordinances. So, uh, these are the tools that we will be using. There are penalties and, um, mechanisms and measures in place to address violations. Also, Article, Chapter twenty-one of the Lake County Code, Article sixty, allows us to revoke permits. And so there is, um, it is defined in the code what those terms are. So you have a gamut of options here. You have the revocation of a permit, you have fines, you have, um, all the other tools provided by the code. And so going into thirteen forty-nine, um, part of those penalties are for first violation is a thousand dollars, second violation, three thousand dollars, third violation is a five thousand dollar penalty. And then there's also permit eligibility down the road.
If I may interrupt, that's a per day?
That would be, yes, per day. So those violations accumulate per day that the violation exists and is not corrected. Thank you. Next slide. And then thirteen fifty, um, this goes for those unpermitted cannabis operations. Most of this ordinance is geared towards permitted cannabis, but, um, there may be situations where there may be unpermitted cannabis involved as well. And so, uh, the penalties for that are one to ten plants, a hundred dollars per plant. And so the penalties for that are 1 to 10 plants, $100 per plant, 11 to 25, $200 per plant, 25 to 50, $300 per plant, and 51 or more, $500 per plant. Plus, you have the option of, plus there is the permit eligibility, and then also there is the other mechanism for summary abatement in those instances where there are environmental issues.
And again, that's per day.
Yes, that is per day. Thank you. So at this time, they wanted me to provide some of the stats regarding some of the unpermitted grows. Legal inspections are scheduled to occur in July. That's when we'll go out there, do a full inspection check, there'll be a list, we'll partner with the code enforcement, I mean, the cannabis division, they'll be the lead on that, and they will be the enforcement arm in those situations. But as far as stats regarding unpermitted grows at this point, or unpermitted cannabis or cannabis in violation of the county code, at this, at this point, we've eradicated approximately over 5,000 plants. That's just based on voluntary eradication, we haven't actually started the abatement process. So that's people just doing what's right and complying. We have 83, more than 83-plus notices that have been posted to date, and 22 structures removed. Usually when we attack a cannabis site, we go after the structures, those are the most easily seen, most noticeable, and then from there, we can move forward on that. These numbers are not current as we're moving fast, and the numbers, each day, we have nine inspections scheduled today for unpermitted cannabis grows. Most of those are in the Blue Lakes, Upper Lakes region, one in, two in Spring Valley, and one in Kelseyville. So these numbers are increasing at a fast pace and will continue to go up. So these are just our preliminary numbers, starting from March of this year to current.
And our next presenter will be William Collins.
Okay, so most of our stuff is going to be about accessibility that's required by the code because along with fire issues and things like that, so if we have a fire out there, we can get a fire apparatus out to the site, we can get it put out, we can get people out and fire apparatus in. So to start off with, public accommodations and commercial facilities are required to comply with Chapter 11B, it's of the California Building Code, which specifies that people with disabilities can access them. Employee work areas are supposed to have an accessible route through there because according to the ADA, you can't discriminate against hiring somebody that is in a wheelchair. So not necessarily are they going to, but they need to be, they need to be able to provide access in case somebody with disability can come in there and work. So some of the requirements for the accessibility are, you need a 36-inch wide accessible route, which can be reduced to 32 inches for a maximum of two feet, and then it has to go back out to 36 inches for four feet minimum, and then you can reduce it again to two feet. Basically, it's so a wheelchair can get through there to get access. There's also, if it's over 200 feet, they need a pullout, so I don't know how long, how big these greenhouses are going to be, but we need, they need an access down the middle so somebody in a wheelchair could get down through there, that's what the code's asking for. And then, you know, a passing spot or pullout if it's going to be over 200 feet. Another thing is, is an accessible route needs to be provided to parking, if parking's provided, to all buildings on the site, so that somebody can get around there, if they're in a wheelchair working there, they can get from the, from the bathroom to the site where they're doing their work, that type of thing. They could also get to any of the other buildings that are on there that need to be accessible, such as the processing building. To get inside the doors and gates, there's a requirement that you have a maneuvering clearance at the door, it's a little bit wider, it needs to be level so somebody in a wheelchair can get around, open the door, maneuver theirself around to get inside without an issue of rolling down the hill, without an issue of not a flat surface there so they can move their wheelchair efficiently. When parking is provided, like I said before, if parking's provided, accessible parking needs to be there, it's required by code. There's a table that decides how much. Generally, if you have accessible parking, then the first one has to be a van accessible space, and then every eight, eight accessible spots would be van accessible. I doubt they're going to have that much parking that it would trigger two van accessible spaces, it would probably just be, my opinion, probably just one accessible space they would end up needing. Okay, structures within WUWE area, it's the Wildland Urban Interface, fire areas must comply with Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, which is mostly talking about ignition-resistant construction. I have less concern about the hoop houses, things like that, the little greenhouses. The structures that they're using for the drying of the cannabis, for the processing of the cannabis, those types of things, you know, it's going to address vent opening size, it's going to address overhangs, make sure that if there's a fire down on the ground that it can't get the roof rafter tails that are hanging out on the side of the building caught on fire and then takes it inside the structure. Okay, 4290 and 4291, 4290 requires access for fire apparatus, talks about commercial sites. If you have a road, you need two lanes 10-foot wide, so a total of 20-foot wide. If you have a one-way access, you need a 10-foot wide, and it's actually, you've got to have two feet on, a 10-foot wide road, but you actually need two feet on each side of it clear as well, it doesn't need to be roded, but it needs to be clear so that way the apparatus can drive down. And it also talks about weight, talks about the surface that needs to be prepared so they can get a fire truck in and out of there. And it also talks about a turnaround at the end and a radius, so basically, they can get these big fire trucks in there to eliminate a fire, you've got this big cannabis grow on fire back there, we need to get a truck back there so it doesn't turn into a wildfire. 4291 is mostly about vegetation around the site, keeping that cut down so that if something does happen to the structure, that it doesn't spread to the adjacent, wild areas and adjacent The electrical for the lighting, we have a lot of, I was out at a cannabis site the other day, they had a 4,000-amp service out there. Generally, a house has a 200-amp service, some big, some, you know, some houses will get a 400-amp, but it's rare. So, you know, in perspective, 4,000's a lot of power, you know, they're out there, they're running these big fans, they're running these heaters, air conditioners, they're running all these lighting systems. So we need to make sure that those are per the California Electrical Code. The other consideration that I'm concerned about is boxes inside these greenhouses. If water can be splashed on it, it needs to be rated for a wet location. If they're high enough that we, in our determination, the water will not be able to get splashed on them, then it's going to be a damp location due to the humidity factor inside these grows. Okay, and this is one that I've been noticing too, we missed on one that I've been out, I was out on one of these cannabis processing facilities the other day, I went out there for final, got missed at plan review, but we need a restroom out there. The plumbing code requires, you know, a restroom, an accessible restroom, if it's going to be, if there's a restroom provided, it's got to be an accessible restroom. The plumbing code requires a restroom so these people can wash their hands, they can use the facilities, you know, we can't have people out there working without a proper, proper toilet rooms. So basically, that's going to be figured by the table in the California Plumbing Code, and it's under an F1 occupancy for anybody, any of the, anybody that's doing the cannabis is curious about that. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, so now we'd like to cover where are we going, what have we done, and what actions are we taking? So currently, we've updated our internal procedures and processes for our cannabis program. So as you know, we have created the Cannabis Section Team, and they're doing a wonderful job in terms of prioritizing our projects and moving them forward. We've conducted research and, on cannabis overall, and updated our internal records and databases, and that's how we're actually creating our GIS maps today. We mapped out approved and pending projects, we've drafted, draft one of the revised cannabis ordinance, addressing the issues that we have been receiving and that we've mentioned previously, and we've incorporated approved ordinance sense of resolutions into the staff's analysis as we made our recommendations. We have scheduled presentations, which one is today, we held another one February the 15th on the cannabis ordinance, and we are actually scheduling workshops, which will be, start tomorrow, and the May 25th and May 26th, make sure my dates are correct, from 4:30 to 6:30 here in the chambers. We did not include at this time Zoom sessions because this is our first draft ordinance, we wanted to be face-to-face with our customers so we can actually describe and interpret the code and our proposals with them. However, there would, there will be media team here on both days to film the event and broadcast it shortly thereafter. And I'll discuss what we propose to do at our next presentation and workshop. And here again, this is where I requested when I first started off, that the board help us with a pathway for including our public input and comments in order to determine or create a, an ordinance that is beneficial to the county as a whole, as well as to the industry and the general public. We've also implemented and adopted grant programs that are helping us with the cannabis ordinance, and Lakoe is our current consultant that is helping us move those projects forward.
So to date, I'm going to move this here, we currently have, as mentioned, 110 approved projects, and right now roughly 135 pending projects. This slide right here gives you a glimpse at some of the new systems we have in place in terms of prioritizing projects, and essentially, as they fall into different stages. I was going to get into a much more detailed explanation of our updated procedures internally and how they apply to the current existing ordinance, and how a new ordinance could improve those projects, but it was part of a team effort, and since we're missing some key staff members today, I think we're going to follow up on that in our next presentation when, after we receive all of our comments, so I can expand upon that at that point. And again, part of that process, as Mary had mentioned, we've mapped out our projects, which roughly stand at 245 approved and pending permit applications for commercial cannabis. One of the factors to keep in mind, I think the next slide can give you a little bit better idea of what we're looking at in terms of approved and pending projects. These maps were currently based on our data in December. We've updated it, and we are continuing to update these maps and include them in a project-by-project basis as they move to Planning Commission. But, you know, going back to having a designated hydrogeologist or biologist, or these specialty areas that we can work with in-house, we could then continue to do what we're doing, keeping this in-house. Another option is if it's going to be, we're going to continue to allow applicants to hire their own professionals, we need to provide a better avenue for those professionals to access our data through some form of online portal. There's, well, we'll leave it open to comments over the next few weeks, so there's, there's issues with both approaches, but this kind of gives you an idea of where we're headed to look at, you know, a more cumulative overall approach to cannabis cultivation. Mary, that's you.
Thank you, Andrew. So in terms of our workshops, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to conduct workshops starting tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30 here in the chambers. After our workshops are completed, we will allow a three-week comment period. We are also creating a portal online that will, the customers can actually submit their comments online, and it will come directly to our cannabis team, and Jamie would be organizing and keeping up with those. We are proposing to provide comments and responses to every comment that we receive. You will receive a response by July 12th, we're proposing to come back before the Board of Supervisors with all of our comments and provide a response of what staff has provided. At that time, I would like to, at the July 12th meeting, we would like to make a presentation on our final recommendations for our early activation moratorium, and we would like to actually, starting today, we're going to initiate community outreach with stakeholders, with the cannabis industry representatives, provided that the Board of Supervisors advance us or direct us to move forward, and with the tribal representatives, agencies, and stakeholders overall. We are proposing to hold a second round of workshops and a presentation in August. We're hoping that if the board directs us with the task force or another pathway, that we can work within the next couple of months and then come back with our facts and findings of what that task force is proposing. And we would like to give a final presentation before the board in October. So that would conclude our presentation for today on where we are on adding, or proposing to add Article 73 to our zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work, this is a monumental project, and I know staff has spent a lot of time, a lot of thought putting this together, and I really appreciate it. I, I do think that there's a lot to discuss here. I think originally, we were, the task last summer, when we kind of decided to kind of go down this path was to streamline the process, you know, we've, we've had in place. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I, I, I think that we need to develop that task force soon, very soon, and rather than go through a comment and response period, I just, I'd like to see roundtable discussions with the industry, with staff, with the board, to kind of really dive into a lot of these topics that have been brought up. There's a lot of meat here to get through, and we do have that moratorium that we have to, to deal with in July. But that's my, that's how I think we should go forward, is, is jump in to, you know, get that task force developed soon, like maybe at our next meeting, have some action with that, and open up the conversation so we can have these face-to-face conversations, you know, really get into that before we move very much further down the road with this ordinance.
Ms. Grant, did you have a statement?
I just wanted to say that this is a very large ordinance, and it's very ambitious. It is difficult to review and take that apart in a regular board meeting, which is one of the reasons why it lends itself to a task force approach, if your board would consider it. There are other avenues that you can do that, and some of the provisions are, I think, more discussion items rather than actual recommendations, so there's a great deal to break down. Some of it may be better off in its own separate ordinance, some of it may be policy documents, et cetera. With regard to 60.33 and the amendment of permits, fixing that is relatively simple, and one of the ways would be if your board would agree that amendment needs to be defined. The existing language says any permit pursuant to this chapter may be amended by granting a new permit of the same type and following the same procedure for adoption of the original, except as specifically provided in this chapter, that means all of Chapter 21. And then amendments to permits may include extensions of expiration periods as provided for in Section 60.10, and changes in uses, structures, and conditions previously approved. However, any change in conditions must be approved by the reviewing, review authority that originally adopted such conditions. I don't understand frankly why however is there, because the first sentence says it has to be treated as a brand-new permit and go through the same process. But again, that is something that a better, or any definition of amendment in that section could accomplish. So there's a lot of housekeeping details, I think, that are going to be applicable, not just for cannabis, but across the board. You know, the zoning ordinance has evolved over many, many years, and just as with most jurisdictions, there's a lot of Band-Aid provisions that could be updated and addressed. I realize that's not the point of this, but when it comes to the amendment provision for cannabis permits, it says except as specifically provided for in this chapter, so without touching that section, you can make a provision that addresses amendments for cannabis. I just wanted you to be aware.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Oh, and I'm sorry, but with regard to the task force, your board could agree to do that by consensus today, but you couldn't take action until the next Tuesday because it's not on for an action item.
Thank you for that. Yes, and I just appreciate the, the report, appreciate Appreciate the work that was done with this. One of the strong things that I appreciate is having all of you here. I know being part of the last process when this was initially done with Ordinance 3073 and all that, you know, a lot of folks put a lot of work and energy into that. It was new, it was, it was one of the prime subjects of, of the county at that time, and so a lot of work was put into it. And so I know with that, it's going to take what you stated as well, a collaborative committee. There's a lot of concerns, a lot of people feel they're not heard. I'm glad to hear a lot of things today coming out, like, you know, the workshops. I know that a lot of people want to see more workshops aside from just here and also possibly in the community, so I'd like to entertain that as well. And before I go further, I know Supervisor Sabatia has his pen up, so I'll allow him to go ahead and.
And just to finish up the conversation from Ms. Grant, maybe there's the possibility of amendment without expansion and amendment with expansion where that can help us kind of better understand what the amendment is. I think there's ways to, to break down what exactly that we would be looking at.
Oh, well, yes, this provision is confusing.
At best.
I was being kind, but it's, it's not workable. And the whole point of any good ordinance is so the public can follow it readily.
Right, right. And, and the reason I said with or without expansion is because we've already done an environmental study of within the footprint and we should be able to figure out if there's a, a need to enhance that environmental review versus if you're expanding, obviously we need to do another environmental review based on the expansion you're looking at. So I just want to go quickly. I, I sent a, a long list to Director Darby. Appreciate you reading through that and I just want to make it public as well. I think the formatting is, obviously we need something better that can be read more in a linear fashion. I appreciate everything kind of being brought together into one chapter rather than being kind of spread out. So that is important as to why we're doing a revision. I appreciate the tree ordinance being there. I do agree that we want to look at a independent ordinance for that, so I'm hoping that's the direction we go because it doesn't make sense to me that we do a tree ordinance for cannabis, but we're not doing a tree ordinance for other things that will also take trees down. And it's, it's not saying you can't take trees down. There's a, a pathway to saying what's acceptable and what's not, and I, I appreciate that. I'm not sure if that's perfect, but at least it's a good start to, to go from. The additions of the drought management plan, the tiered process that you're looking at, not sure if that's the right way to go or not, but it's the right step forward in enhancing that. I appreciate your words of concern of the hydrology reports and I, I hope that we aim for that neutral analysis from somebody in-house, whether it's a consultant or somebody that we have hired. The addition of the event permits, it's been a lot of conversation that's been brought to me. It's a license type that has been available at the state, so I appreciate seeing that in there and I think that just needs to be fleshed out. No more early activations, makes perfect sense to me at this point. And I love the addition of the incomplete abandon as well as the suspension revocation. Those parts weren't there before and we need to make sure that we're not left in the gray as to is this something we can do or is this something we can't do? But I, there's other parts of the previous ordinance that I also really like that I want to make sure that we look at continuing and that's the exclusion zone map, which included the farmland protection zone. There was a mention of it in the definitions, but it's, it's kind of, I, I felt like it was kind of lost other than when you look at the map. So I want to make sure that we, we still utilize a map. I think reviewing the map is absolutely crucial. We've learned so much from areas that maybe we didn't anticipate these things to happen, but they did. I also, I was reviewing the setbacks. There, I, I like the old setbacks personally, the 100-foot setback from the perimeter. I also like the 1,000-foot setbacks that we had from public lands. We had a definition of public land, which was if it's a destination for the public to go to, that they're invited to go to, trails, visitor centers, so on and so forth, that that's 1,000 foot, but we all know there's a lot of federal lands all around the county that there's no destination and so that's why we created that category and I'd love to see that. But I also know that we had a 200-foot setback from, I want to say the off-site dwelling or something like that. I think that if it's your project, it's your project. If your house is right next to the site or not, I really don't care, but to your neighboring house, I'd love to see that expanded to like 1,000 feet to make sure that there's a good buffer between the next dwelling. I think that's important to make sure that we do that. I also saw in there that it said no retail where cultivation is. We had approved a micro business where we allowed for retail. The idea behind that was for economic development of cannabis-friendly resorts or kind of like a winery type, type of thing, a tasting room. And so I want to make sure that, to me, that's long-term economic development of cannabis and I just want to make sure that that's in there. I, I agree that if you're growing, you know, if you're a farm only and you don't have that other type of facility such as a resort, that yeah, putting retail in the middle of an ag land is not exactly the right thing. I didn't see the one acre to every 20. I did see some other limitations, but I, I thought that that worked. I also saw that clustering, which basically you would take like five different parcels, put all the acreage together and then be able to, because to me that was an environmentally friendly way of doing it, to cluster everything in one area rather than having it everywhere. I didn't see that be transposed from the previous ordinance to this and I think that was an important one for here. And I also didn't see the mention of water trucks. And I know that was in there previously and it's an issue that we're being, we've been seeing through the drought and so that's an important one for me. Just for things that I read through that I quickly will say I disagree with, the lottery approach. I think we need to use our environmental review approach to be able to say yes or no to projects, not a lottery approach. It was weird to me that C1 disappeared from the retail and that C3 was added. I'm, I'm concerned for those who might become non-conforming. There was also some other zone changes for cultivation and other things. And again, I'm, I'm concerned about the non-conformity. I think, my personal opinion is that was too much change too quickly, especially after so many people have gotten their licenses. There was also your, it looked like, and maybe I misread, that it looks like you can connect to municipal water if you get approval from municipal water. And since this is ag, I'd like to continue it to be ag and I just don't know, maybe I don't know, but I don't know ag that connects to municipal water. Now, if it's your retail or if it's your processing or manufacturing, I get that, but for ag, I, I would prefer that we, our, our water purveyors are struggling enough to provide clean water. We just kind of had that conversation earlier. And I want to make sure that we don't add more burden for them to be able to filter and process the water to make sure that it's potable and that it's being used in that way. And I did see that there was a limited total canopy, if I'm correct, of five acres. And so this is one of the things that I didn't see in the ordinance was in 2023, there's a new license type that's coming out. I think it's license type six, if I'm correct. That's for the five plus. It was supposed to wait till 2023, so that's, we can let our small farmers, our local farmers get in on the business early on and by 2023, it was kind of the idea that corporations could come in and start doing stuff. I don't see that in there and that simplifies life because there's no more stacking of licenses. And so I think even just at least discussing that license type, I think would be good. I did see a lot of state rules that were embedded still in this ordinance and I think the easiest is to say we're following all state regulations because they change. And if we put something and formalize it in text, then we're going to end up being contradictory if they change their rules. So I'd love to see then, maybe that makes it less than 46 pages. My personal opinion, there's no need for fingerprinting of employees, there's no need for extra security measures. I think just following state rules and laws and letting businesses make that decision for them. This is not 2018, this is not 2016 anymore. I think that we're in a completely different world and economics of cannabis where the attraction is just disappearing and dying that, that we continue to have those things. But there's two things that I found missing and then I'll, I'll finish off real quick is Supervisor Simon and I met with all the, maybe not all, but many of the fire chiefs for a while to discuss 4290. And there was a promise that we would come back with ag road standards. I want to make sure, number one, that we do not treat cannabis differently than traditional ag. And so asking them to have a beautifully asphalted road up to their cultivation is not correct in my opinion unless it's a facility, like if it's a processing plant, if it's a manufacturing, that makes perfect sense. But if it's ag, then it's ag. But I also agree that having an ag road standard is something that helps us make sure that we have a standard that we live by, that there is those safety standards that come along. And one of the examples that Chief Sopeda gave us was that everybody has some sort of fertilizer or pesticide and those things can be damaging to the employees that are there and they need to be able to get in, especially while people are getting out, whether that's a fire scenario or a biohazard scenario, we need to make sure that that safety is there. And I think that an ag road standard is something that I feel like I made a promise to our fire chiefs that we have yet to accomplish and I want to make sure that that's on our, on our pathway. Also, dry sheds, I think that's an important topic that I hope that we can resolve before the, soon, because people are going to be planting and there's still not, I believe, a legal route for people to have either temporary shelters to dry or the, a permanent shelter is that require a building permit or not, but it's still a conversation that has not been resolved that we need to resolve. I do know that we did pass at this board level to pass to the Planning Commission, who did approve it, but it never came back to the board, sorry if that's confusing. But we wanted to do setbacks for the state routes. And I think that fits right within the scenic combining district and I would suggest that we maybe start from there with the task force reviewing what that was and seeing how that can be implemented similarly for the scenic combining district areas. I just have a quick question for Bill. The life safety standards, was that for hoop houses or was that for greenhouses, since greenhouses have to be engineered, so therefore would be structures? I just was curious, what, what is our way of seeing the differences?
I would think that the way you're talking about possibly changing it to a ag would considerably reduce a lot of the things that I discussed today because it was a commercial property, if we're going to call it a commercial property, you know, the accessibility requirement's going to kick up. Obviously that, and it also has the 4290 stuff in there. And no matter what structure it's going to be, we need to make sure that it's not going to fall on somebody. You know, those hoop houses I'm less concerned about, some, some tarp stuff or, you know, plastic on top, some, you know, plastic tubing up there. So if, if something like that falls down, it's not going to, you know, we're not going to have a big life safety issue. More of my concern about the structure would be like permanent places, like the drying facilities, things like that. And like I said, you know, if, if, if it's going to get converted to an ag, then a lot of that accessibility requirement's going to go away because, you know, it's not, it's not applicable to an ag area. It would only be applicable to the drying facilities or the processing facilities, things like that. Another thing that I didn't put in there too is if, I don't know if in the county here, if we allow people to process to make like their oils and stuff like that, but if they are, you know, then that's going to turn into an H occupancy and it's going to need a, a lot more requirements to, to meet that.
Yeah, anything out of growing a plant, I think, is a commercial activity and therefore requires all those things to, to me. I, I want to make sure that whatever we're asking our traditional ag to do, that we're asking the same thing when it comes to just simply outdoor cultivation, which under a hoop house, California state law is still an outdoor license. That's my opinion on, on doing that. So I just wanted to put at least in the public record, all of those things. I think the task force is the way to go to hash all of this out. There's a lot here. So appreciate you bringing this to us and knowing that there's going to be a lot of change before it even comes back, before it's even final.
Thank you for all of those comments. I just, in terms of, and I agree with all that's been presented. The only question I have in terms of the workshops tomorrow and the following day, I don't know what that procedure would look like. Do we move forward or do we not?
I say yes. The more comments you get, the easier it is to build up the next iteration of this ordinance. Supervisor Simon?
I'm in agreement also. We should go forward with those workshops, obviously more to come and I am in favor of the task force also as we move forward, get the industry, get the folks together. So we said we'd commit to that and, and I think we need to, obviously. And, and once again, I'll say it from the beginning, you know, we talked about five years for getting this thing implemented. There's still going to be stuff that needs to be worked on, but we've come a long way and we've learned a lot. So we'll try and work through that process, but I am both in favor of moving forward with the workshops that you currently have and expecting more coming along with that the August and moving for that. So in support of the task force also. So I'm in complete agreement with that.
Vice Chair Scott.
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to agree with the task force and the workshops. I just want to thank you for this presentation. It was very logical. I don't think we've ever really had this process with cannabis. It's always been, it seems like chaot, chaotic and this was not. So just thank you and, and staff for this. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with you Supervisor Scott. And I, I just want to say again, we, we have the opportunity to do this really well and other than the moratorium we have in July, we don't have time constraints. We can take the time that's necessary and work with everybody. We, we have so much experience here in the room, out there and here and up here. So I, I think we just leverage all of our experience and our resources and do it really well.
Sounds great.
Right, I, I'm in a, in agreement with the task force and, and working together with the stakeholders, you know, both, both mindsets, you know, the farmers that are actually doing it and the folks that are living in the communities that have POAs, HOAs and all of that. I know that's a big, a big issue, especially in, in one of my town council areas and the roadmap task force is the Spring Valley and Double Eagle Ranch. And so I know that their insight and input will be on there. I know there's a lot of illicit, illegal grows going on in that area and I think sometimes our constituency and our citizens focus on the actual license or applicants and, and kind of pinpointing all of the things that they're doing rather than focusing all of the illicit that's taking place, that's really doing the damage and making these smells and all of the other things. Neither here nor there, I just highlight that because it's, this is something they can actually grasp onto. So I really want to urge you to hear them. I represent both sides of the faction and I have a lot of others that are not happy with it and of course, those are on public record as you see on there. But hopefully they can come together, speak with you, you know, and understand that you're putting together something that can help move this forward and move this along. And so my, my encouragement is everybody that's listening, you have insight, you have input. I know you've been blowing our phones up about it. Come to these meetings, come to them. Hopefully we can also see if we can do one in some of the areas like we, like we stated, aside from just being here. Would have been nice to see a Zoom. I'm not sure if that's still possible or not, but I understand, you know, your limitations on that. If, if there's not going to be an accessibility for that, let's see if we can do them. I know for sure one, they would like to see one probably at the Moose Lodge or in Clearlake Oaks. So that's probably one definite area that will, that will desire that, a workshop there as well. But otherwise, I won't belabor it because there's a lot of things I got notes on and I can go into, but I think those will be more prevalent for the actual task force and ad hoc or whatever you want to call it. Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, as your board's providing direction to staff, since it appears you have a consensus, very strong consensus for task force, do you want to give any direction to staff as to the composition of the task force so that your board feels that you're getting a good cross-section of the industry and everyone else who may be involved?
Supervisor Price?
Yeah, I don't know how many seats for each category, but obviously the industry and traditional ag and members of the community at large and staff. Anybody else?
Yeah, we actually just this past week started putting into place a system to track comments that come in for those people who cannot attend the workshops. We're receiving your emails and we're categorizing them, if I remember correctly, into the general public, the cannabis industry, local tribes, industry experts, I believe, or researchers and then I think consultants as well.
and then, I think, consultants as well. So we could work out with that, and maybe you have some basis to develop a task force. We do not have traditional agriculture comments separated into a separate section, but that's...
I think it would be helpful to have someone from traditional ag.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Grant?
I just wanted to clarify, when your board brings this back for action on June 7th, your suggestions now, staff can certainly look at, but ultimately, your board will decide the composition of the task force you create and the number. But if you have recommendations now, so staff can get to work on it and begin the process, that might move things along.
Supervisor Spatia?
Just real quick on that subject matter, there's so much here, there's retail, there's cultivation, there's processing, there's event, that may be different groups to focus on different parts, because there's don't really a need for ag to be involved in the retail conversation. But they're definitely involved in the cultivation conversation, so I think that maybe having some dynamic flexibility on who's involved in what conversation, if that's, if you're able to scatter the conversation in different parts on different days. Just putting the idea out there. There's still the state that's also changing their ordinance as well, I think that will have an impact as well. I'm going to ask a favor to the public, change is always a little nerve-wrecking and anxiety building, especially if you're seeing something that doesn't quite fit in the project you're trying to move forward, or it doesn't quite fit in the project you may have already been approved for, especially since we're not, these are not permanent use permits, they're 10-year use permits. And so there's a lot of anxiety out there, I've received a lot of phone calls, please be as constructive as possible, knowing that this is a work in progress. This is not a permanent stamp in concrete, that this is how it's going to end. This is going to morph into something eventually that comes back as a final product. So please be patient with the process, be constructive with the process, and make sure you express yourself throughout that process as well.
That sounds great. I think that your comments are greatly received. My recommendation would be for us to have discussions that kind of mirrors our presentation, so we took the categories, the three categories, line use and zoning, the environment and the community. So if we can have like different parties or stakeholders within those three categories, I think that that will be a smoother, more comprehensive moving forward, so that way when we come back and present to you, you can remember that those were the categories and those were the issues we're actually addressing for those particular areas.
Supervisor Simon, then Supervisor Pyska.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You know, obviously, for the industry, we've had it established here, and obviously we have the Lake County Cannabis Association, so we want to make sure they get that spot at the table, too, you know. So I know the task force will have, you know, county, like some of the suggestions, you know, Farm Bureau, LCCA, you know, from that organization, so making sure they're at the table as we move forward with that process is very important. So, you know, when we established this and was able to vote on it back in 2018, you know, there was a lot to be learned. We have industry standards that are, you know, being applied right now with our permitted grows that are here in the county, and we know there are folks that are doing everything they can to help us establish it in a positive way. So make sure they have that at the table. Not everybody's going to get everything, we've said that from the beginning, but having that industry information out there is critical. You know, I haven't been through the total process as a supervisor, plan on this year, hopefully going and see some of the final processing and everything that's happening, so understanding the industry as it's developed. So just very important that we get that done, so I'm in complete favor of that.
Supervisor Pyska?
And then the moratorium that we have out there hanging, I think we'll need a recommendation on how to move forward with that, too.
Yes, so my recommendation is to come before you on July the 12th with the presentation on that and our final recommendations.
The final recommendations for this new ordinance?
No, no. For early activation.
Okay, great, okay, great. So that'll give us a little bit more flexibility?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah.
So with that...
I was asking, I believe it expires the 15th of July.
Yes, it does.
With that, I will open it up for the public, because I know a lot of folks came to talk about this, so...
I'm sorry, may I ask one other question? In terms of composition for the task force, how many members are we looking to include, or is it unlimited?
Unlimited is dangerous and never-ending. I would offer seven, no more, but that's just me.
But with that understanding that public can be there, so it's not going to be limited to those seven, public can join the conversation and have their voices heard, even though they may not be part of that task force, right?
Okay, duly noted. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, so your direction to staff is then to bring back at the next board meeting on June 7th exactly what? The recommendations for composition of a task force and how that will work with their goals, and then your board can formally approve and start taking applications?
Right.
I just want to make comment on that one, too. You know, I know the number seven was said, but I want to make sure, obviously, that we have everyone at the table there, so might be nine, might be seven, but make sure it's a comprehensive recommendation, if you could. Obviously, odd number always helps out, too, when you're moving through the process of trying to find consensus. So, yeah, open to that, but seven seems like a good starting number.
I think, too...
But you might see something, hey, we missed somebody on an opportunity.
Just to ensure that there is some sort of pliability, because there's a lot of folks that feel that they're not going to be heard and, or have past history for whatever reason, so if there is a need to add one or two more, it will hopefully happen, so that people are all represented, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. And then, may I recommend that, could the board recommend specific individuals to this task force, or which you prefer staff to take a shot at it and present it before the board?
Ms. Grant?
Normally, your board takes applications for the task force. Your board comes up with categories that you feel are germane to the issues at hand, sometimes numbers, if you only have a couple of categories, you've done it many different ways. But then applications go out, and then your board makes the final decision. Your board may also, when this comes back, want to consider about Zoom to ensure, because these meetings would be public meetings, so that the public will have a chance every time the task force meets to offer comments on their progress, et cetera.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So with that, I'll open the public comment. If there's anyone in the room that'd like to come up to the microphone and talk about this agenda item, please come up and state your name for the record, and your three minutes will commence from that point. Come on up.
I have a property up on Sigler Springs, and my property line is six...
What's her name?
My name is Sheila Henry, sorry about that. Is about 700 feet lining a very, very large permitted, which I could not make any comment to, because I was only given three minutes in two years. And the issue is this, I am now losing all my oak trees. I have a lot of oak tree, I have six acres, and I will videotape it, because right now I am losing every single oak tree on my property. It's not due to the drought, I've been there 22 years, and only since the cultivation of the marijuana and the amount of water that is being used have my oak trees died. They're dying. So what I will do is, I will, I have photographed the whole, because I have hundreds, okay? They're all dying on the side of the cultivation. And then when they all die, I will publish what's going on with my property, because I'm, they bought every single parcel around me, and I just wanted to have a voice, and I've been trying to have a voice. There is, if you, with this task force, I wish they would address the ability for the amendments. The property owner has several hundreds of acres that are away from my property, but he said, "I'm sorry, I can't do anything, because the board said that I have to start the process over again." So they will not go and make an amendment to take what they're cultivating, right my whole property line, which is taking away, not only are they removing all the walnut trees, more walnut trees, condensing the field, and they are not using the available land that they have that's down the road, that's much larger than what's next to me. And his comment was, "Sorry, can't do it. The board said I cannot make an amendment without starting the process over again." So I'm going to lose, in the process of everybody trying to get this going, and I'm really, really thankful, I want to tell you, I'm very thankful. I'm going to have barren land, because my oak trees, if you come on my property now, they're not full anymore. They're very barren, you can see right straight, I'm going to lose them all. And I just think that there should be a opportunity to make amendments, if they have the capability of moving it, that, to save my property. And I'm the only one that's effective, so I'm not really that big of a deal to anybody, and nor am I an attorney. I'm just a homeowner that's been here for 20-odd years. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Jennifer Smith with the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. I'm going to reiterate a bunch of what's been said today. We appreciate the time that's gone into this, this is a monumental task, it's one that's been asked for and needed for several years. I especially appreciate the fact that the team and the board recognize that this is just the beginning, and that an ad hoc or task force is needed, and the LCCA definitely supports that position, and we hope that we have a seat at that table. Some overarching topics that have been discussed and will be discussed is we would like to see more alignment with state law, we would like to see more consistency in the definitions, even from a central point of just referring to the code in the state, so that when the state changes their definition, we're automatically updated here. I think that that would be a more seamless process for everybody. The limiting of transferability, or the perception that that is limited at this time, is a very big concern, and I hope it will take the time to dig into that further. The ability and the process for amendments and change is a huge issue, especially as we come through drought and drought mitigation programs or plans and how we want to do, change our farms and make them operate more efficiently, especially in these market conditions, we're going to need a very streamlined process for that, and at this point, it's very confusing. Acreage caps, I just want to say on the record, acreage caps only hurt the local industry. If there aren't acreage caps across the state, we're only damaging the farmers here and limiting our resources here. Regarding the task force, that was exactly my suggestion, and so, and I speak on behalf of our membership, and that is exactly what we would like to see happen, so that our voices can be heard. But also, you know, we want to talk with traditional ag, we want the Farm Bureau involved, the Sheriff's Department, attorneys, either county council or outside cannabis attorneys. But there's a lot of input and valuable input, there's a lot of resources in this county from people who've worked on ordinances in other jurisdictions. So it looks like that's the direction we're going. We're super happy at the LCCA that that's the direction we're going to take, and I appreciate the time that's gone into this, and I appreciate that this is the kickoff to a very long marathon. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John Mas, I think when there is a problem and there is a disagreement and a dry well and dying trees, that there should be a complaint process. People feel helpless. Before the valley fire, people at both ends of my road had dry wells, they didn't know what to do, they didn't know who to go to, they didn't know how to get help. And with this vegetation management, you write a complaint to the number, that you're supposed to write a complaint about it, you never hear anything back. So there needs to be a complaint process besides this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have code enforcement right here, so do you want to respond to that, Marcus?
Or Mary?
Sure.
This is Director Darby. I wanted to respond to the complaint process, because we just hired a customer complaint representative, and she starts May 31st, and we have a streamlined process for all complaints other than cannabis. So that is in place, and in the meantime, if you need to contact me directly, I'll take all calls. And then, Marcus?
I would like to add one thing. When it comes to the complaints that we receive, we do not require contact information or a name. We do take anonymous complaints, because we'd rather know if there's an issue and assess that issue and determine if there's an immediate health or safety issue. So if a complaint does have a name and a contact information on it, our policies and procedures do dictate that we contact the complainant upon the initial first review of the complaint to get additional information. So if you include your name and information, you will be contacted.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Lance Williams.
You can move the microphone, that looks awkward.
Lance Williams, I wanted to say thank you very much for the time and input that was put into this new article. And I'm very happy, because I've got a lot of phone calls as well, that I think that there's a clear path forward here, and I think a task force or an ad hoc committee really can solve a lot of those phone calls that I received. So I feel very confident that this can easily be worked out, and I think it's going in the right direction. So I just really wanted to express that, I had other things to express, I don't think I need to say anything really too much more to that. But I would like to also say, I was thinking about that amendment process, and that this gentleman here had said that he went to a farm and might need a bathroom. I also know that depending on which planner you have, that planner might say, "Start over." So I think there has to be a clear process here. And I think that with the right task force, you can really come to those conclusions. I would also ask that, you know, making sure that whoever's on that task force reviews these tapes from 2016, and so they see the process that has happened. So there's been so many different meetings, there's been so much public input, well, I mean, I want to make sure the cannabis input is there, but I also really want to make sure that we include the public input that has been collected over the time, because it's something that really, you know, hits home. So when you do this task force, that, you know, there is a way to make sure that the employees here, because they're so busy, actually can review these tapes. When I was looking through some of the current ordinance that's being suggested, I kind of felt like a lot of people, there were some things, there were some issues there, and I don't think they had time to review and kind of have an understanding. So I just really want to say thank you for suggesting the task force, I think it'll be great, and I think we can move forward, and who knows how long it'll take, but I think everyone's heart's in the right place. So thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Go ahead.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
In terms of amending the projects and having to start over, a lot of that falls under SEQA, and whether or not you're changing the footprint of the project, which would, I mean, if you go so far down in environmental analysis, which is the crux of most of these projects, as far as getting them through the processing and permitting procedures, if you change the footprint, that's often what triggers going back and having to start the review over again, sending it out to local agencies for review, tribal review, and then at the state level with SEQA review. So it really, it's not a blanket answer, it's a project by project, and we look at what those changes are and what, you know, warrants the next step. But it could be improved, definitely, so.
Thank you. Ms., and Ms. Grant, well, before she's...
Oh, I just wanted to say that certainly SEQA dictates the level of environmental review, and if you expand or change the project, that's going to be a different type of amendment. But the way it's presently drafted, almost everything would be an amendment, and that can certainly and easily be corrected.
Excellent, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for LCCA, and I want to say thank you Chair Crandall and Board and staff for the discussion here today. This is absolutely a heavy lift, and as you can imagine, we have a list that's longer than Bruno's of comments and input, and are grateful that a path has been, it sounds like agreed upon to move forward and create the right vehicle, because it's far more than we can hash out in three-minute segments, of course, here, and even, you know, in a few workshops. So I think the ongoing task force is brilliant, and we look forward to participating. And the one thing I want to speak to is that I think that an area that this ordinance doesn't quite reflect board direction is about the vision for cannabis in Lake County going forward, and of building... in Lake County going forward and of building a diversified industry that celebrates all of the different license types, right, at the state level of manufacturing, processing, retail, and then the whole realm of cana tourism that is available. Like, how can we really put Lake County on the map for something that has been produced here for a long time? And there are ways in which the, the zoning and the different license types will actually restrict that as written. So I think we need to look at matching the ordinance with the vision for economic development, economic diversification, and also building new tax revenue streams, because the future is not just in cultivation alone. As we see with any agricultural crop, we need to be able to offer a wide variety of experiences and services for this industry. So that's an area where we really look forward to aligning additionally with, with state law. And one of the resources that I think is available in this marathon, as Jen put it, is working directly with DCC. And I had the opportunity to meet with Nicole Elliott recently, who's the Director of the DCC, and they and their staff have resources to work with local government to help streamline ordinances so that they can make sure that we're not, you know, being redundant. And she offered them to Lake County. And with this more time that we have, I think that's going to be a great additional stakeholder to include so that we're, we're removing redundancies and like saving everybody time and also allowing the state to do some of the work, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers?
Board Supervisors, again, as always, nice to see you guys. Thank you so much. Without reiterating things that we've all kind of talked about, you know, one of the things that I, I really would like to bring forward, and it's something that we've all kind of went around today, is that what we looked at today as far as an ordinance, while we know it's just a draft, it seems to me that it's a lot further away from where we were trying to be. And while the ad hoc committee will bring us all together and bring the focal points together, I think it's really important to look at what brought us to this point and how, how the, the conversation has gone in the past, starting back at 2016, and where we've gotten to now. So I'm really hoping that we can cumulatively, as a group, bring ourselves to somewhere that's actually within the lines of where we're all trying to work from. The, without going over all the little details inside of that ordinance that everybody read, you know, the far-reaching effects of even just a few of those aspects would be severely detrimental to our county economically. And so with that, understanding that this ordinance or the writing of these rules has so much importance to our economic development as a group or as a county, every little piece of it has to really be digested and focused appropriately. When we look at a 2,500-mile radius, right, for notifications or odor, odor plans that are also going to require further CEQA review, it seems like a lot of those little aspects actually turn into these bigger problems. And focusing on the bigger project, the bigger job of seeing us develop, really has to be the keynote or the key point of that ad hoc committee. When it comes to modifications or amendments, I think that it would be an important thing to think about, that those, what we write in this ordinance directly reflects what the industry will do. So when we look at modifications and looking at ways where people can save water, right, when we think about the drought and the, the lady over here who was talking about the things that have happened to her because of the use of the water, so on and so forth, allowing people to convert from outdoor to greenhouse, that by itself is a monumental change in the amount of water that you use. I mean, it, it's, 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 it's mind-blowing, okay? It's, it's less than 10%. And I gone, I actually went over this with Mary Darby about agricultural water recycling, water usage, and it all applies not just to cannabis, but agriculture in general, but you can knock down your water usage by 90% or more by simply putting it into a greenhouse. However, if you want to move into that greenhouse because you're outdoor and now, let's say, you want to save and conserve water voluntarily, no requirement, then you have to get a whole new application and start over. And that was my conversation with Andrew. And Andrew, you know, I think everybody wants to work together, right? So we need the framework in which we can work together. Otherwise, they're handicapped. Thank you.
Thank you.
He didn't put his name.
Oh, sir, can you, you didn't state your name. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't, I missed that. We know your name, but we-
For the record, Michael Wagner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the chambers that would like to come up and speak on this? Because I have some folks on Zoom that are ready. All right. Blair Gu, if you can unmute, and we'll start your three minutes. If, if that's your name, state it for the record. If it's not your name, state what your name is for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Blair Gu. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So first, I wanted to say thank you to the Board for bringing this before everyone today, and then also thank you to Director Darby and staff for taking the first draft of the proposed cannabis regulations seriously and kind of coming forward with a great kind of jumping off point. I do agree with Director Darby, and it seems like that's the direction that the Board is going to have a task force in place, which I think is fantastic, allowing members of the community, but also members of the industry and perhaps members of the, the county staff to come together and really develop the best path forward for everyone involved. I do have some general suggestions, but my office, Ragway Law Group, will hopefully be able to participate in some of the meetings moving forward, so I'll keep my comments brief. I do want to just initially support kind of the comments made by LCCA representatives. You know, there's a lot that goes into ordinances like this, so not getting everything done on the first kind of go-around is expected, but here are some kind of overarching suggestions that other people have touched upon. So streamlining the proposed ordinance to comply with state law and perhaps streamlining the definitions section specifically to adopt references to state law definitions that will probably cut out a lot of work that needs to be done kind of on a staff level. In particular, making sure that any ordinance that's adopted really differentiates between the definitions of canopy versus property versus premises, so that when those words are used throughout the ordinance, it's very clear as to what the ordinance is referring to, because I have seen in other jurisdictions, issues with kind of using those words interchangeably, which they do have different definitions, and when they are used interchangeably, it can create problems with compliance with state law. So just pointing that out as something to consider moving forward. And then some kind of other, other overarching goals. So one of the items in the proposed ordinance is a yearly lottery for the seven cultivation licenses that will be available or that would be under the proposed ordinance. And I encourage everyone to kind of rethink this lottery idea. If the county's goal is to get the most qualified, best qualified operators to operate within county jurisdiction, I've seen in past experience of my own that lotteries can sometimes lead to less qualified applicants being granted permits, and then also a lot of turnover in terms of management of those entities. So just something to think about there. Also echoing Sarah Bodnar's comments about creating cannabis tourism in Lake County, if that's the goal, as it has been in prior years, just considering removing limits on where retail can be located if we're going to create more micro-business opportunities, just making sure that kind of the overarching goals that the county has stated in the past and that the cannabis community and other members, just of the community at large, are kind of addressed through new drafts. And then also just-
Ma'am, your three minutes are, are up, so if you can wrap up.
Yes, my last comment is just to include language about how any proposed new ordinances or to discuss this in working groups will, will impact those that are currently in the process but maybe don't have completed applications with the county, or those whose CEQA documents have not gone through the clearinghouse, just discussing how those people will be impacted by any changes. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Phone 707-295-7257. If you can unmute, we'll give you three minutes. Star six. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is Bart Levinson. I'm concerned that right away, you're limiting the discussion by limiting access via Zoom to the meetings that are supposed to be Brown Act compliant to both the public and to those with disabilities. What accommodation is being made for people with disabilities to have access to these meetings?
Yes, Mary, if you would like to-
Yeah, we're part Brown Act compliant.
I'm just gonna let her come up and-
And elected officials aren't.
Yes, we are filming the actual workshops, and they will be broadcasted, and they'll be, they will be uploaded into our website as well as made available for public access.
Thank you, Mary. And then I think you stated, Ms. Grant, did you have something to state on that?
I was just going to say that the task force will be Brown Act compliant and will be by Zoom. Your Board's creating the task force, and a board-created committee should always be Brown Act compliant unless it's a very limited ad hoc grouping.
All right. And then I think we have one last person. Patty Lanier, if you can unmute.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi. I just wanted to echo a lot of what was said today, especially giving appreciation to the Board and to the Community Development Department and to the community members who come forward to, you know, kind of share what they're experiencing at large, engaging with the cannabis community. I want to just express that as a small operator, what I was told yesterday by Patrick in a meeting on the Equity Grant was that I'm probably the smallest farm in Lake County that's licensed as an operator. And my initial thinking going into this situation was that I was going to be a mom-and-pop shop as a micro-business operator. And I've been essentially zoned out of being able to do that. And I just want for small farms like myself, our voices to be heard in these meetings. And so I just, I appreciate being invited to the table. So thank you so, so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lanier. Andrew, you were gonna state something right before she came.
Oh, I was just gonna comment on the, on the workshops. My understanding is that it, it's gonna be kind of set up at different booths for different topics, so it's gonna be kind of a flowing conversation, which would be really hard to, I guess, accommodate for a Zoom, you know, having people attend virtually, so.
Those are for the workshops this week. And so just, just so everyone knows, the workshops this week are gonna be conducted by Community Development, and they're going to be, these aren't necessarily Brown Act compliant because there's people can, are coming, discussing it. And then when we come next week on, in June 7th, or the next meeting we have, that's when we'll put together the ad hoc group or the task force that will be Brown Act compliant. And I know for sure, for me, you know, I want to ensure that there is a balanced group. I'm not going to try to appoint, for me, I'm not going to try, and I know that the Board's pretty good about this, too. We're not gonna try to appoint just specific, we want to make sure every, everybody has a say in, in people at the table. So, Ms. Grant?
And I would just state in addition to what you've already clarified, that the, these workshops by Community Development, these initial two may not be by Zoom, but I'm sure the Department's going to make adjustments to ensure that people can be remote or who have difficulty gaining access can readily speak up during these meetings, and the meetings can be configured in such a way that will make Zoom effective.
All right.
Yeah. I think we got that in the presentation. The August meetings, the next workshops did have Zoom in there, so yes.
And we got a thumbs up from the back room, so that seems like a big yes.
So with that, I'll go ahead and close public input as I've got the Zoom. And I think from here, is, is there anything else we need to do in order to move forward with this, or do we have a clear understanding of where we need to go from here? All right. With that, it looks like we'll close item six point, I don't want to say it right, 6.5. And we will entertain a lunch break and come back at 2:00. All right. Oh, okay. And it, so I think we are at hour 7.2, and that is consideration of award of bid for the Middletown Multi-Use Path Project, bid number 22-05, State Project Number ATPL 5914102 to Argonaut Constructors of Santa Rosa in the amount of $1,117,449.60. With that, I will, Scott DeLeon?
Scott needs to be come up there to the hall.
Okay.
Is there anyone that can update Scott DeLeon to panelist?
He's been promoted to panelist now.
And Kim, I think Scott Harder will also need to be penalized, whatever you call it.
Penalized?
I'm like penalized.
It's very close to penalized.
Oh, well.
Well, I've heard the word candlerize, like calendarize, calendarize, yeah.
You know, new word.
All right, there we are. Would you, Sam, would you like to take a break, or should we do something else while we're waiting, or?
Calendar?
Yeah, let's move on to calendars. That way, we can allow them to get prepared, and in the meantime, we'll conduct calendars. Is there anyone that would like to go first?
Sure, I'll go first.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, what do I got going on here? Tomorrow, I am in a weird meeting warp. I have a Cal AIM meeting that the sheriff invited me to be a part of. Tomorrow morning, quickly transferring over to a partial ARPA meeting, quickly transferring over to a flight with Director Ewing. To be honest, I'm not sure if I'm going to Rockland or Roseland or that area. It's for the, to do a review of a, I don't know if it's an aquatic center or the, a rec center, just to kind of review how they've done their stuff. It's to follow-up on Supervisor Scott was working on the aquatic center, looking at what other areas have done, and the invitation was passed on to me, and thank you very much. Happy to learn and see what others are doing, because let's not just reinvent the wheel. There is, I was hoping to at least see if I can break in and listen into the workshop tomorrow. Not sure if that's even gonna be a possibility. That's happening here with Director Darby, and then joining the school district board meeting later on that evening. Thursday, there's the RCRC Legislative Call that we'll be a part of, as well as, again, listening into the workshop. It's easier that way, isn't it? And also doing a full dress rehearsal as the mystery dinner is back on, and looking forward to seeing how that goes. And working with the senior center on Friday to review one of their programs that they're looking at purchasing to see if I can be of help. And at this moment in time, I don't think I have anything. On Saturday, on Sunday, I will be at the Lower Lake Days Parade. They've invited me to be a commentator at the beginning of the parade. There's another commentator at the end. And then I know I have something on Monday, but I forget what it is already. And meeting with Melinda Rivera on Tuesday- looking at how do we save greenhouse gases and how do we get ourselves electrified or using hydrogen buses? That will be some of the topics. And that Thursday as well will be a City Clear Lake, City Council meeting for the city of Clear Lake. On Saturday, the 4th, I have been invited to speak at Born to Breathe, which is a youth tobacco association program. And so, I'll be speaking there. Following week, looks like we have Middle Creek Restoration Project meeting happening June 6th and meeting with our CAO. And then starting over on June 7th with a board supervisor meeting. That's all I have.
Supervisor Price, go.
Sure. Just, I need to report out on a meeting that we had last Tuesday with the CAO and OES Director of Topeka County. And the work that they did with tree mortality was really helpful. It's about an hour of just, you know, picking their brains and letting them, they, them letting us ask questions and trying to form a strategy. So, it was really helpful. I also have something else to share. The CAL FIRE foresters that have been helping us study our tree mortality, they're with the LNU. So, there is an event in Napa County with the RCD and CAL FIRE and USDA and the UC Extension. And that's going to be on May 31st at 6:00 PM. It's a webinar. And Mike Jones is going to be presenting. And then USDA, Natural Resource Conservation Services will have financial assistance programs for forest management. And then financial and technical assistance from the Napa RCD. And then Q and A is available. So, if anybody, everybody in Lake County is encouraged to attend, invited. This is just, you know, how we're taking a regional approach to this, sharing resources. So, I did forward that on to Susan and Matthew, so it can be shared out. But I just wanted to bring that up as a resource coming up. So, tomorrow morning is the ARPA meeting. And Thursday, I just got my jury duty postponed again. Then, there's a, so the RCRC Ad Hoc Committee, which EJ invited me to, is from 1:00 to 3:00. So, I'll be attending that via Zoom now that I don't have jury duty. If I can, I'm going to hop down to the grocery outlet at 3:00. Looking forward to that. That's so awesome. I don't know if I'll make it over to Kelseyville after that for the Side Street Market. But, but that's starting up again in Kelseyville. Oh, and also tonight, Tuesday nights in Cobb, there's a farmer's market at Pine Grove. And I obviously can't get there usually on time, but maybe today is the day. I know. I did. But I'm, hopefully, my family will be there and enjoy everything that's happening. Friday, home hardening meeting, I have a call with Lars. And then I don't have anything this weekend. On the 1st, I have the TID in the morning, tree mortality next steps. That is our meeting, OES is coming up here to help us facilitate our planning. So, we're looking forward to that. And that's going to be with the CAO's office, our auditor, Director DeLeon. And hopefully, are you going to be able to come to that?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Oh, yeah, there you are. And then Channel Cats registration is June 21st and, um, June 1st and 2nd, starting at 5:00 o'clock at Locklomen. So, that's very exciting to get that underway this year. On the 2nd, I have a Conoctive Fire Safe meeting with the HOAs, geothermal meeting, Girl Scout meeting. And then Friday, the 3rd, last day of school, but it's also our home hardening meeting. And then Fiddler's Jam is on June 5th, the first Sunday of the month. And then Monday, the 6th, my meeting with Susan, and that's it for two weeks.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, so finishing up the board meeting today, I do, I'm going to be traveling out of town until Thursday. I'll be back for the ribbon cutting at 3:00 PM at the grocery outlet. Can't say, you know, how excited I am to see that project come to fruition and get that open. Obviously, job creation, economic development, all things when I ran for office to start with. And obviously, I'll still say South County is the place, the gateway, and the place for development, just to keep happening. So, I'm excited about that. Obviously, economic development for the whole county, but it's great to see that as we are the first thing that people see when they come from the Bay Area. So, when we talk about being open for business, I know we've got a lot of work to do to make the process a little more refined, but hey, we're getting them open and we're moving forward. So, excited about that. I'm excited about the business owners that have the opportunity to do that. And once again, like I said, I think when we talked the other day, they have hired 40, pretty much locals to work at that business. And I know there'll be a transition, because there's probably a lot of youth that are working that'll be going off to college. So, those jobs will be recurring in our area, which is, you know, always what we're trying to do, give people different opportunities. And also, it provides a, you know, second option for your shopping needs. Harder Stairs is a great family-owned business, been there forever, supports the community very well. And this is just another amenity to help families along on their monthly budgeting issues, you know, as times are tough. Gas prices are rising, mortgages are going up. It's really important that you always have those opportunities and to keep those sales tax local here in Lake County, which I'm excited about. Like I said, traveling out of town, I'll be back at 3:00 PM on Friday. Have the weekly planning meeting. I don't think we're going to meet, because we don't have the meeting next week. So, we'll move right into it. I will be out of town this weekend. I will be back on Monday to do the ceremony that we always do at the Memorial Day at the Middletown Cemetery, of reading of the names of our, you know, our fallen veterans there in the cemetery, which is just a great event. If you haven't been to one, please go out and support it, hear those names read out loud and show that respect from each and every one of us for the freedoms we enjoy every day is, it's an honor to be a part of. With that, following into next week, I did have LTA and APC on here for some reason, but the June 1st one is, must have been canceled, right? Because you have the stuff going on. So, have the tree mortality on Wednesday and the planning meeting on Thursday. And I know somewhere in there, high school graduation is coming along too. I think it's the 4th.
I don't know.
I think it's Friday, the 4th for the Middletown area. I'm not sure what everybody else's schedule, but I heard Lakeport's going to be this week. So, anyway, just trying to keep up with that. And then back here for the 7th, for the board supervisors meeting. I know we reported on Lafco and Ava last week. You know, we'll continue to do that. Also continuing, you know, just every week, we can do this. You know, there is a burn ban in place for the county, but there's still opportunities for you to make sure you're taking care of your vegetation in the area. You know, if your neighbors cut that, your grass and other things, please get that grass down. Do it at the right time, though, early in the morning. Making sure, you know, you're stringing equipment in the afternoon if you're doing that. Always have a water supply. And I also just want to say, you know, and I know that we thank all of our fire departments, CAL FIRE, all of our local agencies after the events, but we got, we're going into fire season here. We all need to do what we can, but I just want to say thank you to all the jurisdictions that come and do pre-position teams here in Lake County. That's very important. I know Chief Willie Cepeda and Chief Siancio and the rest of the groups are always working on that. And, you know, I think we had pre-positioned teams last week that helped on a couple of close calls, which is so important. I know they're putting in every time we can. So, you know, just, I want to just throw some thank yous out there to those individuals. Because right now, between now and the end of the year, I mean, it's fire season all the way around, but it's really the intense times. And all the other departments that are involved, which is everybody in the county. So, just be diligent and we'll keep moving on through this, this year with the drought. So, that's all I have.
Vice Chair Scott?
Um, yes. The only thing I have to report out is, as I pointed out, Will Bill was in town last week and Lake County was given space to have their team time, which was Hope Rising. And then community members were invited to a space. It was a very safe space. I think this was the first time we actually had tribal representation at a Hope Rising gathering. It was a very powerful conversation. We spoke about trauma. I know I've heard from the tribal members here about how trauma impacts their communities, but just understanding further how we need to be deliberate with our words and how we need to be looking at our own policies. There was one thing that was pointed out that I never even thought of was mission statements that we have, you know, we have here as a county and we have in many nonprofits, and how traumatizing the word "mission" is to our natives and how we need to be looking at different words to remove that trauma. So, it was a very safe space. It was an amazing conversation, very powerful, and we're hoping to continue those discussions. It was, it was needed. It was good. And actually, three of us there sit on the Equity and Inclusion Committee. So, we were able to bring that insight then there too. Tonight, I've been asked by a constituent to go check out the Needle Exchange in La Cern, so I'll be driving up with them if we're done in time here to go see that for myself. Tomorrow, I guess we're not doing agenda review. I have first five commission meeting from 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow. And then we'll be attending a graduation tomorrow night. And then Thursday, I had scheduled the Hope Rising meeting in the morning, but they've just canceled that. So, I have open space there. Friday night is Clear Lake High School's graduation. Saturday is Memorial Day Parade here in Lakeport, starts at 11:00. It'll be going down Main Street. Memorial Day, Monday. Oh, there's pretty light. June 1st, Lakeport Unified School District's Town Hall via Zoom, just to get updates on what's going on with the school district. And then just paring on the 6th for Tuesday's meeting.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes. Sorry, I needed a quick redo. Both Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Scott reminded me of something. First, Lafco last week continued the process. It's a conditional. We're moving forward with the annexation if the election passes. And so, it's going to an election. I did also want to make a statement about tribal health over in the city of Clear Lake. It was good to see the new building. I got a walkthrough of it. I know both Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Crandall were there. An amazing facility in the middle of Clear Lake to provide a much-needed extra healthcare options and availability for everybody. Really happy about that. And then the Needle Exchange, I did have a conversation with Director Portney, because we had asked from the board that it come back to us. We've kind of elapsed and gone a little further than that timeframe we anticipated. And I'm not going to give an exact date, but I was told about maybe three to four weeks in order to complete it, so that it comes back for a discussion here at the board. Wanted to make sure, because of the public comment earlier, and I had forgotten to make that statement. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, I'll be brief. Tomorrow, I have North Shore Fire on, so I think the chief asked me to come to something that he's having in Nice, so I'll make sure I go to that. Blue Ribbon Committee meeting tomorrow in Clear Lake in person. It will be, it'll have Zoom as well, but I, they want us to be there in person, so I'll be at that. Thursday, Ad Hoc Advisory Committee that Jessica and I will be attending. Also, I think I almost forgot, there is, I do a meeting, no, that's not the right one. So, the Advisory Committee, then there's also the Legislative Committee that we have, or the brief that we have after that. In the evening, Clogba, so that's the Clear Lake Oaks Glenhaven Business Association meeting at the Moose Lodge. Friday, I intend to probably come to the office. I know that it's also the Upper Lake High School's graduation as well. And then, let's see, Saturday, Sunday. Monday, I'll do the Avenue of Flags. It starts in the morning, of course, at 7:00, and then the 4:30 is the cleanup. Tuesday, I have pretty open, I think, right now. Wednesday, Agenda Review, Earth, CSA. And then Thursday, AR 630, Cal 20 Village, it's a water situation that's in Upper Lake. And I know that there's some discussion that happens about the project. And then Friday, I think I have an office down. And then Monday, CAO meeting, Middle Creek Restoration. And then back here Tuesday for the meeting. So, does anybody else have anything else for the calendars? Supervisor Simon?
Just one last thing. I didn't know if you wanted to make an announcement about the grant?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Well, Scott.
Scott's here too, so it seems to be perfect.
Yeah. So, do you want to talk about the grant and make an announcement?
I'll leave that up to you.
Okay. So, the evacuation grant that we got the email for this weekend, it's $340,000, is that, yeah, for the Soda Bay Corridor finally came through. We were expecting it in January, but we're happy to have it now. And so, by the end of the week, we've got some requirements and we'll just keep moving forward. So, that's very exciting. Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you. With that, we can, we can go back to our 7.2. And I read it off already. And so, Scott, if you want to come up here, you can as well. You don't, you don't have to sit there if you don't like, or if you can, it's up to you.
I apologize for the mix-up earlier. I was attending the meeting at home and decided to come in during your lunch break and I couldn't get everything to work correctly. So, we'll continue working on that. So, pleasure to be here and see you all in person. My name is Scott DeLeon. I'm the Public Works Director. And today's item is your consideration to award a bid for the Middletown Multi-Use Path Project to Argonaut Constructors. The Public Works staff prepared plans and publicly bid the project. We received five bids. I've included those as an attachment on the back to give you a summary of the prices. And our lowest responsible bidder is Argonaut Constructors. I'd like to take just a moment to explain the base bid and the alternate bid. If you've noticed that on the, on the tabulation, this project impacts a portion of Pine Street, which is a county-maintained road. It would result in the improvement of a paved shoulder on Pine Street. And Pine Street is in, as you can imagine, is a low-volume road. It's not in very good repair. And we felt that it would be prudent to use local funds to overlay the entire road. So, we have a nice new path and a new roadway adjacent to it. So, we're going to be using local road funds for that portion that was non-participate, didn't participate in the funding, so we're using local funds. So, that's, that's what that base bid. And then the alternate is that portion on Pine Street. So, the Public Works will be paying for that. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Our recommended action is that you award the contract for the Middletown Multi-Use Path Project to Argonaut Constructors in the amount of $1,117,449.60.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. This is a great day. This is a long-term project, it's been worked on. I think it's, you know, it really ties into what we're doing here in Lake County. We're talking about trails, opportunities, but also with the Blue Zones, getting people healthy. We have a lot of opportunity for commuting back and forth along the road. We have a lot of folks that do that. But, you know, just for us to get here, it's been great. I know we've been waiting since I come on the board. Scott, thank you very much. I know there's always a process to go through, but this is going to really look nice as you come over the mountain and you come into the communities of Middletown and South County of what we're doing, expanding those opportunities that are there for health needs too, and also making sure people are safe walking up and down the highway. Always something that we all deal with in all of our districts, making sure that that's done right. I do have someone here today that was former chair Fletcher Thornton, who was a big part of this. I'd like to open it and see if Fletcher has any words, like you. a process to go through, but this is going to really look nice as you come over the mountain and you come into the communities of Middletown and South County of what we're doing, expanding those opportunities that are there, that are there for health needs too. And also making sure people are safe walking up and down the highway. Always something that we all deal with in all of our districts, making sure that that's done right. I do have someone here today that was former chair Fletcher Thornton, who was a big part of this. I'd like to open it and see if Fletcher has any words, like if you'd like to come up and say some stuff when this stuff was awarded. So just for long-term, me and Bruno are always seeing this on LTA and APC, the 29 Corridor Study that was done back and started 2013, 2014, a lot of these projects and more work that'll be done. And now, I know, I don't want to go off another tangent, but there are corridor studies all the way over to the 20 now, including up in your area as we do this. So this is just a fruition of a project that was awarded and I'd like to turn it over to Matt.
Fletcher Thornton from Middletown. Someone asked me earlier, aren't you getting tired of waiting for your agenda item? I said, not at all. I've been waiting almost seven years since we got the grant for this trail. Math, Middletown Area Town Hall, put in for the grant. We were refused the first time, but we didn't give up and we went back and got the $1,004,000 for the trail. It was a collaborative effort by a lot of people in the community. It was brought to Math by myself and, and a couple other guys. They're no longer in Math, but we've had, we had a dream that, please forgive if I rattle on just a little bit, but-
No, go ahead.
There's nobody waiting, Doc. So the reason we wanted the path was not just a multi-use path. That's not the reason for this. They call it multi-use because we had to, to get our grant. So, but it's really a trail. We have kids, a big arena, horse arena. We have probably the best horse arena in Northern California, but we have no room for horses. So we couldn't hold rodeos there and events for the kids. So we were constantly hauling kids to, to Wyrika and Redding and all over the country. So we were, every time we had to go to rodeo, we had to leave town. So we thought if we could get someplace to keep horses, then we could have our own rodeo. So I know I'm rattling on, but we, I went to Moak Simon, not supervisor Simon at the time, but he's just our friend, Moak. And I said, Moak, we need your help. We need you to get on board with this, to get this done. And we need you to make a commitment that down the road, you would maybe put in some stalls or corrals so people could come to Middletown, spend the night in your hotel, board their horses and go to the horse show. It took him about one and a half seconds. He said, I'm in. And from there, we collaborated together to get this grant. Then after we got the grant, it turned over to Scott DeLeone. And he has been a prince helping us get this thing done. We had two years, almost three years of downtime because of COVID and all that. But this is not just a trail. This is so important to our community. We're just finishing Grocery Outlet. I was the project manager there and we're opening Thursday. I put a plug in for it. So like Moak said, it's going to get people an alternative. Billing turned out really well. And we thank Scott for that also because he's helped us along with that project. So I want to thank everybody, Moak especially, because without his support and his help from the tribe and from our friends at the tribe, we probably couldn't have got this done. So for you, Moak, special thank you. And I want to thank the board for getting this, this bid out. And it's, it's, it's kind of nice because Argonaut just finished the project for us, Grocery Outlet. They did the paving and all that, all dirt work at Grocery Outlet. So it's, it's a nice thing. I want to thank you so much for your support, Moak. Thank you especially, Scott. Special blessing to you, you know that. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Fletcher. Supervisor Spatie?
Yeah, just from the perspective of being on a Lake APC, this was a project that started when I was still over at the City Council for the city of Clear Lake. We had a field trip out there to kind of check out what the idea of the project was. I've been watching this and asking about this, what's the update through the APC? And more than happy to approve this so that we can add this great addition to the Middletown area and very thankful that it's in front of us.
Supervisor Pyska?
Well, I mean, I've been using that dirt trail most of my life and running cross-country and, you know, riding horses, all of those things that we've done growing up in Middletown. And so it's, it's pretty special to have this trail. But are you putting in stalls in a barn or what are you doing?
So no, we committed. When we talked about getting the path out there, it's to help, you know, with Central Park and to get that. So they don't have to unhook their trailers and do all that stuff every day. We can have it put in there and, you know, give them a nice little area that they can just get on their horses and ride back and forth, you know, which, which is great. So yeah, that's exactly what we committed to, to do. And hopefully we'll just continue growing it because we know that's an economy too, that we can just keep building on. We can get those rodeos and those bigger shows here. It just brings more economy into the local, the local businesses. So we're going to hopefully just keep expanding it with the help of this multi-use path being a first step of that.
Well, I love that. I didn't know that you were doing that and that you'd made that commitment. And, you know, my family's all in on rodeos. So that's awesome.
I'm glad it wasn't a surprise for you that that was the next step.
Absolutely not.
With that, I'll open it up for public input. I'm not seeing anyone else in the chambers except for Fletcher, and he already spoke. So I don't see anybody on Zoom. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors award the contract for the Middletown Multi-Use Path Project to Argonaut Constructors, Inc. in the amount of $1,117,449.60. Base bid and alternative bid and authorize the chair to execute the agreement and execute the attached notice of award.
Second?
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Scott, for the presentation.
Thank you. Keep healing up, man. Thank you for being here, I know.
So we have our 5.8. We pulled that from an earlier timeframe. So it is 5.8, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Adopt Resolution, revising the fiscal year 2021-2022, adopted budget of Lake, County of Lake, canceling reserves and fund 281 CSA number 21, North Lakeport Water O and M Reserve Designation in the amount of $7,500 to make appropriations in the budget unit 8481, object code 784.62-74, capital F, A, equipment/other for the purchase of a laser turbidimeter. B, approve the purchase of a laser turbidimeter and authorize the special districts administrator assistant purchasing agent to issue and sign a purchase order not to exceed $7,500 to HACH Company. And with that, I think this is Scott Harders and he is on. Scott, yours.
Good afternoon and thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So what is before you for your consideration today is a capital purchase. That's, that's what needs approval from the board. We need to cancel reserves via the resolution and authorize the purchase of this equipment. And this is coming to you mid-budget cycle because of a change in the state mandate for one of our water treatment plants. They are requiring some additional calibration for our turbidimeters that are currently in our plant. They're requiring that we have a benchtop turbidimeter in our lab to calibrate those other turbidimeters on a weekly basis. So we pulled it for clarification though, because it didn't list clearly in the board memo or the attachments that we did in fact follow county policy and we received three quotes. The only quote that was provided in the board memo for your information was the lowest. But we did solicit quotes and we received three quotes ranging from approximately $6,500 to approximately $7,600. So just wanted to point that out. We are following county purchasing policy. We're not requiring a waiver of the bid requirements. We did have three quotes for this equipment.
Supervisor Spatie?
I appreciate that clarification. Just checking in, I see the 12% supply chain surcharge. Hopefully, we're not seeing too much of that because that's, that's a little worrisome.
No, not too much.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public for, I'm not seeing any hands in Zoom. So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, or I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, the roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatie?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of a laser turbidimer, turbidimner and authorize the special districts administrator assistant purchasing agent to issue and sign a purchase order not to exceed $7,500 to HACH Company. Glad I got that one out.
Say it again?
No.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
I made my comment and then second.
Oh, okay. All right.
So a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Scott. All right. With that, it looks like we have covered everything on the agenda except for closed session. And so with that, we'll go into closed session and I'll read those items off. 9.1, Public Employee Evaluation for the Community Development Director. And 9.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.91, Nichols versus County of Lake Etahaw. And with that, we'll go into closed session.